Okay, I'd like to begin by introducing our translator for this evening, Ms. Vivian Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez, oh, Ms. Rodriguez, there you are. She'll come forward and introduce herself.
Si, buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesite la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Gracias a usted. We also, I'd also like to note that we have headsets for the hearing paired if anybody needs assistive hearing technology, as noted on our screen here. Then I'd also like to announce, we have two items to announce from closed session. The first item is that the board endorsed the superintendent's decision to appoint Mr. Ed Diaz as the chief business officer for the district. And I believe Ms. Diaz is here and will be introduced a little bit later in the meeting. The board also agreed to, or accepted, the tentative agreement with, between the district and CSEA. A copy of the tentative agreement and articles are available at the, on the table back here, or I think either are now or will be very shortly. The terms are as followed, as follows, I'm sorry. Health and welfare benefits with agreed upon premium rates. The classified salary remains in effect for 2006, 2007. However, if another recognized unit receives an increase above 1.5 percent, the classified will receive the differential. Revised language on organizational rights and obligations. Revised language on leaves. Updated evaluation form and revised language on evaluation. The district agrees to no layoffs or reduced hours to fund this agreement. The parties agree to negotiate modifications to the reclassification procedures. The net cost of the districts, districts is anticipated, is anticipated to be $2,700, I'm sorry, $277,000, which includes a 1 percent increase in the district contribution to health and welfare benefits. That is in current contract language. We will put the item on the next board agenda, which is October 24th, 2006, for public input and possible board approval. And we understand that CSEA has scheduled a ratification meeting on October 18th. So that are the two items that, those are the two items that are, were taken, that we took action on in closed session. Okay, that brings-
Madam President, if I, may I just add a note on that?
Yes.
Because of the very large turnout of people from the, from the Santa Barbara Teachers' Association, I think it would be, I think it's appropriate that we point out that this, this reporting and this action comes from legal obligation to report it, number one, and the conclusion of the process, and is in no way meant to interact with what your message is to the board.
Oh, correct.
Or to preempt you in any way, or to put, or to say, "Well, look, they've settled. Why haven't you?" I don't, that's what, not, not what this is about. This, these are totally separate.
Correct. Okay, and we, and I'm actually trying to kind of get us through this initial part so we can get to the public comments, which I think is what most people are here for. So if we can-
Madam President.
He's speaking to me. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Dave, yes?
Take the place of Mr. Price here tonight. If you took action, do you want to report the vote?
Oh, thank you very much, yes. Both items were on a vote of four to zero with Ms. Nancy Harder being absent. Thank you very much. Okay, um, we, that brings us to item C5, which is the acceptance of donations. Do we hear a motion to accept with appreciation?
Move to accept with appreciation and like to point out the total dollar amount, just in this one round of contributions, being $94,747.82. Great thanks to the community for that high level of donations this last month. Much appreciated by our students.
Yes, and, and as noted on, in this list, those go directly to fund some items that might otherwise not be able to be offered to our students. So that is very generous of our community. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye? Dr. Noel? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Any opposed? Okay, item carries four, zero, with one absent. That brings us to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Sarvis?
Well, I do have a couple of people to present to you tonight. And the first is the, the subject of the board's action in closed session, who is Ed Diaz, who is our new assistant superintendent for business services. Ed, would you please come forward? Ed is most happy to see a number of our finest here tonight because it's Ed's job to find the money. Ed, let me tell people about you. Ed has 12 years of experience in school finance, including four years as a chief business officer. Prior to his work in the Oxnard School District, he served as a business manager for the Rosemead School District and the director of child nutrition services in the Ventura Unified School District. Ed also has more than 20 years' experience in operations in food service, in the food service industry. And we welcome that background as well. As the chief financial officer of the Oxnard School District, a district comparable in size to the Santa Barbara school districts, Ed managed the administrative functions for accounting, budget, finance, facilities, construction, maintenance and operations, risk management, purchasing, transportation, and food services. Well, with the Oxnard School District, he managed a $125 million operating budget and 11 active construction projects. And Dave, we'll let you do the comparison on that one. Ed is known for his sincere, personable style. He is, of course, very knowledgeable, ethical, and I talked to four superintendents. You've had quite a parade of superintendents in your career, I see. And thorough in business managers, in business matters, excuse me. Ed earned a bachelor's degree in business administration, finance from California State University, Long Beach, and a master's degree in educational administration, school business specialization, from California State University, Los Angeles. And Ed, I understand that you've done some coaching in Ventura. So I scrambled a bit here, and you're going to have to change your hat wardrobe. Here's a Dos Pueblos Charger hat. Here's a Santa Barbara Dawns hat, and we will get you a San Marcos Royals hat as well.
We play these guys tomorrow, I think. Thank you.
Ed, would you like to say something? Oh, you look good in that.
No. Ms. Diaz, you have to say, "We are these guys now."
We are these guys. I'm these guys now. I'm one of these guys. Well, thank you very much, and I want to thank my wife, Mary Jo, for joining me here tonight. As anything big in life, she's always been my partner in everything and will continue to be when I work for you here. I won't go into a long speech because I know this is going to be a long meeting tonight, but I will tell you this. I, I'll always be available to you. I'll always work with you, and I'll always tell you the truth. So I look forward to working with you. Whatever things come up, we'll work through them together. And I just look forward to starting on November 1st. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to our district, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, and Mary Jo. Well, I have a couple of other people to recognize, and I won't be long. John Batner, I'd like you to come forward. I didn't see where you were, but I know you're here. Let me tell you about John. Tonight, we say thanks to a very special friend, John Batner. After 35 years in education, John's first retirement was in June 1986. Come on up, John. That was 20 years ago. But John knows where the action is, and he's worked as a consultant to the districts, assisting with various administrative tasks for the past 20 years. Now do the math, 35 plus 20. John is a product of the Santa Barbara school districts. He attended Harding Elementary School, Lacumbra Junior High, and then Santa Barbara High School. He was once a quarterback for the Dawns football team, played basketball, and was the class president. John graduated in 1944, then joined the Navy. After serving in the Navy, he returned to Santa Barbara and went to UCSB. John joined Santa Barbara School Districts in September 1951. That year, he taught at Lachalina Junior High, and I understand, John, your annual salary was-
Lacumbra.
Oh, Lacumbra. I under, I understand your annual salary was $3,300. He moved on to serve as the assistant principal at San Marcos High School, and by 1960, he was the school's principal. Well, in the years that follows, John has served in a number of capacities in the district. He was principal of Wilson Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, we had to close those schools, Jim. Franklin Elementary. Project director for Title I, project director for consolidated application, and the director of special services, which is what we now call instructional support services. John, thank you for your 55 years of continued service to the children of Santa Barbara school districts. We have a small token of appreciation for you, and you will see that there are a number of administrators who came out tonight just for you. Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to say something, you guys?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. I almost didn't make it. The interview was conducted by Dr. Charlotte Elmont, a nationally renowned educator who was chosen by the United States Department of Education to go to Japan and be on the team to build the education system under General MacArthur. I missed the appointment. I forgot it. She was in charge of interviews and guessed whether I got in that year or not. But a year later, trying again, I want to especially recognize for my career, Mr. Jack Richards. Some of you know who I'm talking about. And he got me in. And another person I would like to recognize tonight personally in my career, some of you may not know about, Mr. Donald Stillman. How many remember? He was the first principal of San Marcos High School and largely responsible for a very creative, innovative, and exciting new organization for a high school. Don Stillman was a master science teacher, and after his career with San Marcos was chosen by the district to develop weekly science lessons for all the elementary schools. Don Stillman is someone should be recognized. So I just wanted to say Lacumbra, because I know there are a few here tonight. Just a couple of names. During the fire, I went into the office because I live just two blocks away of your school and took the student records out. I had to identify myself with the fire chief. He didn't want anybody going in the building. But I watched that second floor burn. And of interest, maybe, the first room to burn was the room where I taught at Lacumbra. No, I don't know what that means. But it went. So all of these years are fondly remembered, but I think you would all recognize and acknowledge that the family is all part of it. And I'm very proud that my family that lives here is here this evening. So they would stand. John, and, yeah, there they are. They have been an inspiration to me, but the conscience of all that is my wife, Roseanne. She's the conscience. So thank you very much, school board. And I'd like to just end with one little anecdote for you. A new superintendent, upon arrival, appointed me to be at every school board meeting, to write the minutes of the meeting called Board Highlights, and the teachers were to have that in their box at 8:00 the next morning. I learned a lot about the complexities of your responsibility. So let's vote November 7th.
Yeah.
Mr. Batner, as a, as a teacher and as a product of this, of the education in this district, I would like to personally thank you for numerous years given to the students of this district and to the community in general. Thank you very much.
Well, I have one other presentation tonight. Santa Barbara Northside Rotary has had an 18-year partnership with Adams Elementary School. Principal Matt Zuchwitz, would you please come up and tell us about the power of partnerships, specifically your school's partnership with Santa Barbara Northside Rotary? And as you're talking, I would like Dennis Wade from Rotary North to come forward, and I'd like teacher Kathy Escobar to come forward. Matt?
Dr. Sarvis and board members, I have to say, first of all, that I wasn't, I wasn't aware that I was going to follow John Batner, which is just such an honor. So I, so I really appreciate the opportunity to do that. But it's with great pleasure that I, that I bring, that we bring recognition to Dennis Wade and Kathy Escobar, who have really defined what a school/business partnership should be. Over the last 18 years, Kathy Escobar's worked here with Dennis and the Santa Barbara Northside Rotary, and they've helped Adams Schools in a lot of different ways. And these are the kind of things that they've provided. They provided financial support, including benches that our children sit on, on a regular basis every day. They provided support for our playground, for books. They provide support for reading incentive grants that we have. They provided speakers for our Veterans Day and Flag Day ceremony. They provided tutors for the students. They've served on our school site council. They've served on our technology committee. We've partnered with them to do bowling for kids, and our students have bowled and earned money for the, the boys' club. Every year, we paint an E. Modernari Square at the E. Modernari Festival. And additionally, every year, the, the Northside Rotary has meetings on our campus, so we have an opportunity to demonstrate the great programs that are happening at our school. So it's really a privilege to recognize both Dennis and Kathy, as well as the Santa Barbara Northside Rotary, for their true dedication to Adams School. And the Adams Partners in Education Program, which has been under Kathy's leadership and began when Dennis came to our site 18 years ago, has become a model program that's going to be emulated by others. And we at Adams are so grateful to have our longstanding partnership with the Santa Barbara Northside Rotary, with Dennis Wade as our champion in the community, and he serves that role very, very well. So I want to say a huge thank you to Dennis Wade, to Kathy Escobar, and the Santa Barbara Northside Rotary, who've defined what school and business partnerships are meant to be. So thank you very much.
Is Joanne Keynes here as well? No? Okay. Joanne Keynes was instrumental in these partnerships as well. Matt, we have some plaques. Would you please hand them out? Dennis, we have one for you. Would you take one back to Rotary North as well? And Kathy, thank you so much. Good. And those are our presentations tonight.
On behalf of the board, thank you very much for the work that you do or the services that you provide our students. That brings us to item C8, oh, I'm sorry, item C7, the superintendent's report. Dr. Sarvis?
Well, I have a number of items to report, but in the interest of time, I will save some of them. Let me just note that we have set the dates for the single plans for student achievement presentations to the board. Those are in the board brief. And let me comment also on Dos Pueblos student Brad Ebner. Almost two weeks ago, Dos Pueblos High School senior Brad Ebner collapsed during a football game. He suffered a head trauma, and Brad was in critical but stable condition after undergoing surgery. Fortunately, he's off the ventilator now, and he's responding to stimuli. Our hearts and prayers are with Brad and his family. We're all pulling for him. And that's the superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you, and I'd like to echo your concern for Brad. As a parent of a, of two former football players, I certainly share the, the concerns of the community and hope that his family and he himself are in everyone's thoughts, and we are wishing them well. Thank you. The student representative presentations generally take place the first meeting of the month, so we will not-
Have, is that correct?
Yes, we will.
Oh, we will, I'm sorry. We, but we will have a Dos Pueblos, a, a presentation this week from Dos Pueblos High, Dos Pueblos High School student, Brandon Faraday. Is Brandon here? Oh, thank you very much.
We input-
Good evening, board members. I'm the ASP representative for Dos Pueblos High School, and I will be presenting information very briefly on San Marcos and Santa Barbara High School as well. We have homecoming coming up, October 14th for San Marcos and Santa Barbara High Schools, and October 21st for Dos Pueblos. There will be various activities that follow that over the, over the week before homecoming. The, the student leaderships at all schools have made those very interesting. There's a district-wide Red Ribbon Week, which is the last week of October, the 23rd through the 27th. Students who pledge to not partake of drugs or alcohol are awarded with candy over the week. We have certain activities for them to participate in as well. Dos Pueblos had their first senate meeting about two weeks ago. Four clubs were ratified. It went rather smoothly. We hope to continue that for the rest of the year. And just a few comments on Brad Ebner. It has really brought Dos Pueblos together to see this young man and, and all the love that has been poured out from the community. And just today, I found out he was outside in a wheelchair, which was a really, really big development. He's been able to open his eyes with his hands, and he's starting to make meaningful movements, which he's, he's slowly progressing. We also have another student that is in the hospital. He had an unsuccessful angioplast a few days ago, Bryson Williams. We are collecting funds at school for both, both students, and accounts will be set up at Santa Barbara Bank and Trust fairly soon. There will also be access to a website from the Dos Pueblos homepage to get the most recent information and to find out how you can make donations to the two families. We've actually had students come up to us and tell us that even though they didn't know Brad Ebner or Bryson Williams, if they can still contribute and still sign their cards, cards and everything. And it's really just been a unifying experience for Dos Pueblos. I would also like to thank the other two high schools and their principals for all the support they have shown over the past two weeks, and how much support has also come from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faraday, and it's really heartening to hear that the students at Dos Pueblos are doing something so positive with such tragedy that has befallen your, your fellow students, and we appreciate, we appreciate that from you. And our hearts go out to, to all of the, the parents and family and friends who are affected by that.
Board, on your behalf, I approve the fundraisers in advance, knowing that you will approve them when they make it to the board agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to C9, correspondence. Are there any, is there any correspondence board members would like to bring forward at this time? No? No. Okay, then that brings us to public comment, which I think is where many, many people are here for. So I just want to very briefly preface the comments by actually, by thanking all of you for being here tonight. I know for teachers and for students, and for other members of the public who might be here, that giving up time on a weeknight is often very difficult. It's precious time that you have to grade papers or do homework, which I know you really are sad you're missing, or, you know, be with your families, et cetera. So I appreciate your, the fact that you are taking time to be here tonight. I think that regardless of whether we agree or disagree on various issues, we are all truly fortunate to be living in a community that takes educational issues as seriously as all of you do. So I, I appreciate your being here. We do have several people who want to speak, so it, I will ask that we adhere to our, our time limits. Please try not to go over your time limit because it infringes on the, the times of other people coming up. So I think that, that, oh. We have 30 people who would like to speak, so we will have to limit the, the time to two minutes per person rather than the typical three minutes, because even at two minutes per person, that's going to be an, at least an hour of public comment. So again, if other people have made the point that you want to make, maybe you can just say that you concur with them and make your new points. I also want to remind any of you who, who feel that you don't have enough time to say what you would like to say, that you can submit any comments you would like in writing. You can email us, and we, we hope that we will get a chance to hear everything that everybody has to say. So with that, we'll begin our, our public comment. Just briefly, probably most of you know this already, but there will be a little light on the podium. It will be green when you begin to speak, and when your time is up, it will turn red. Thank you.
We'll start with Ken Stevens, followed by Luther Lewis. Excuse me.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Sarvis. My name is Ken Stevens. As you have seen tonight, there have been many, many teachers here, and you're going to hear from many of them after me. I am here speaking on behalf of the 900 teachers of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. We are in, here in force tonight, not to bully you, as the superintendent claims, but to show you our conviction and our strength. We are currently stalled in negotiations for compensation. Once again, we hear the same old story of, "We'll get to you when we are ready." It's time that we rewrite that story and reach a fair settlement now. Teachers are fed up with the misguided priorities of the board and the superintendent. We will not sit quietly while the board puts SPTA members at the bottom of their to-do list. The board claims Santa Barbara is a quality school district that focuses on the classroom, and the classroom need, needs teachers who are focused on teaching and not begging the board to do the right thing. It's time to make the necessary tough decisions that will restore the quality of the district and retain the excellence in the teaching force. That means you must make the teachers a priority. Only a fair settlement can resolve this. We want to see you back at the bargaining table with an offer that respects us now. We intend to bargain for what is right, not for what is left of the district's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Luther Lewis, followed by Lynn Montgomery. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. My name is Luther Lewis, and I live at 2009 Mountain Avenue. I've resided at that address in the last 43 years. I, I would like to address parking situation that's going to, with your proposed move the academy over to Luccover Junior High School. As you can see, I've spent the last two weeks running down parking spaces along Port Swallow Drive. And I've came up with a total of approximately 80 spaces, and that is using- And that is using, from A to B at the lower end where Vista del Campo is, is 30 spaces. And that, most of that is in a red zone. You have along Gillespie and Modoc, the most spaces in the last two weeks has been five. That's empty. Using the side street of Gillespie, you will only have 10 parking places because signs are clearly marked, no stopping from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. on one side, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the other side. Monterey Street will have approximately 20 spaces going two blocks in. We know that staying within a 24-foot parking space will be almost impossible to do because some parents will use 30 feet to park. Thus, reducing the number of parking spaces. And using the parking for one reason, because each parent has to drop off and walk their children to school. Come back, pick up their park, and come to the school and pick up their child, because you can't have those kids wandering around in the street looking for their mother's car. The big question is, where do you put 200 to 275 cars coming from the east side, bringing kids to this, to Luccumbra Junior High, unless you bus all these kids from another location? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Lynn Montgomery, Lynn Montgomery, followed by Laura Baker.
Hi, my name is Lynn Montgomery, and I am a parent at Luccumbra. I have a son, Austin, who is an eighth grader now. Luccumbra was not our district. We came from Roosevelt. We live on Garden Street. We specifically chose Luccumbra because of the quality of the teachers. I have never seen such commitment of teachers. I mean, here tonight, Mr. Hufschmidt, Mr. Schallenberger, incredible. I mean, my son was actively involved in building that solar electric vehicle. I mean, and my heart is breaking to imagine that future seventh and eighth graders wouldn't have that opportunity, that you guys are thinking about taking that space away. We would not, as a Roosevelt family, have chosen Luccumbra if you didn't have these things. And when I talk to other parents who have sixth graders at Roosevelt, and I tell them about Luccumbra and all the things that are there to offer, they get really excited. What am I going to tell them if now you're going to take all these little first, second, and third graders, add them to that school, squish us all together? I mean, it's not fair. Luccumbra deserves, deserves respect. It deserves a few years of just allowing to grow, of having more families come from the Upper East Side, wanting to choose that school because it's an excellent school, not because it's a leftover school, not because it's all crowded. Please, I mean, the school deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery.
My eighth grader made this song.
Ms. Baker, followed by Ronald Weaver.
Thank you. My name's Laura Baker. I'm a teacher at Luccumbra Junior High. I'd like to be very clear for the public that Luccumbra is definitely in support of the reunification of the academy. We are behind the academy in that issue. We understand that putting yourselves in two different places, or having the district put you in two different places, is not the ideal. But the point that I would like to remind the board and everyone here is that it is not ideal to be in two places. But the academy is doing well. Their scores are good, and this is much to the credit of the teachers and the parents and that community. And I think we need to recognize that, and I want to make sure that the academy knows that we at Luccumbra are recognizing that. There are things for you to consider. There's severe declining enrollment in the district. You've been bantering around the idea of possibility of closing one of the elementary schools. The elementary budget is tighter than it's ever been. I don't envy you. You have some tough decisions lying at your feet right now. But it seems to me that it is not sound educational decision-making to jump into the proverbial pool without looking first. And I think that that's what this proposal has done. I think it's too soon. I think there are other options that you need to look at first, you need to consider thoroughly. I don't understand the magic of moving an entire elementary school onto a secondary campus so soon. I think that in a couple of years, with the severe declining enrollment, it's going to be obvious where a school is available that could possibly absorb the academy. And Pat Salee, at our meeting last week, when she talked to the staff, said she's thinking about phasing in.
30 seconds.
She's thinking about phasing in grade levels. Well, look at your schools that you're looking at possibly closing right now, and think about maybe phasing them in there first, so that you don't have all this extra money from the elementary budget going to not upgrade, but modify a secondary campus for an elementary program. Please be careful.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Ronald Weaver.
Weaver, followed by Don Hawes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ron Weaver, and I'm the president of the Vista del Campo Homeowners Association. The reason that's critical is because we're directly above the Luccumbra Junior High School campus. It's a street, it's a private drive. It's a, the only thing that separates us is a five-foot wire fence. And so, everything that happens at Luccumbra Junior High School directly affects our quality of work life. I'm glad to see all these Luccumbra Junior people here, because we're proud of the campus The thing that we're concerned about is this possible decision of moving all these elementary school students into Luccumbra Middle School. As Luther mentioned, the traffic problem may get horrendous. We have the private drive up there, and already some parents sit there and wait until the school's out, and then they go pick up their students. Many cars will come in, do a 360, go back down Port Oswaldo, and hence, the traffic is going to, has been kind of horrendous. Luccumbra has been a great neighbor to us, and we appreciate Luccumbra, and we hope that we've been a good neighbor to them as well. But as I mentioned, everything on the campus affects our quality of life, as noise, traffic, and safety. And I strongly urge the board to do an EIR before you make this decision, particularly on traffic, safety, and we need an environmental impact report to really show what's going on. There's other things that affect us over there, and that's too many vehicles on Port Oswaldo, and now the parks and recreation has their activities there on Sundays, of soccer, and so there's many, many things going on. We're proud to be a neighbor, we're proud to be a good neighbor, but we strongly urge the board to do an environmental impact report, because that's the only way you're going to know how it affects the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Don Hawes, followed by Lisa Weiser.
My name is Don Hawes. I live at 2109 Gillespie Street. Over 10 years ago, I started the Upper West Side Neighborhood Watch Committee. Our goal is to help reserve and address neighborhood health and safety issues and the quality of life in the 300 homes that border the school at Luccumbra. We have a president, two assistants, I have one of them, and street captains for 12 adjacent neighborhood streets. Concerning the additional placement of grades K through 3 of the community academy at Luccumbra Junior High, I think it negligent to put young children in an enclosed two-story junior high with youth. To simply suggest the facility can be retrofitted to remedy the situation at taxpayers' expense at a school of choice, I think is self-delusion. The huge traffic, safety, and parking issues are even more serious than those at Galita Valley and Junior, and not Calena Junior Highs, and create a logistical nightmare for more neighborhoods, including bellargnols and emergency response vehicles. The recent loss of life of a young man riding a bike to La Calena, I feel, has given the Board of Education actual legal notice in terms of safety issues. The community academy is a school of choice, and all the children will now need to be driven to school without benefit of school buses. Let's let the Luccumbra Junior High principal, who was hired to turn the school around and making strides in doing so, do her job and not compromise the quality of two different educational systems and renew the issue of white flight, which undermines public educational system. However, white flight is simplistic. In reality, it is a fight to quality education regardless of race. The West Side is tired of being historically ignored. We will have white flight now with emergent brown flight. What will be our encore? An emasculated junior high program and traumatized children?
Thank you, Mr. Hawes.
Lisa Weiser, followed by Ruston Slager.
Hello, I'm a neighbor of the West Side, and I'll be very brief. We would just like a traffic study performed, just due to the traffic that will increase in our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser.
Ruston Slager, followed by Greg Carlson.
Hi, members of the board. My name's Ruston Slager. I'm a classified employee, and I would like to ask the board to adopt on their agenda at a future meeting, setting a policy to not allow paychecks to be reduced for increased medical costs for just classified employees. Currently, classified employees' paychecks have been reduced anywhere from 5% to over 20%. And that's going to result in more turnover and a lower quality education. So if you could please adopt some kind of policy to exclude that as a solution to your rising medical costs. There could be plenty of answers to rising medical costs, such as allowing classified employees to spend their benefit on their preferred medical plan of their choice. I myself feel I could do much better spending just the money that the district gives me without even the increase of your current group medical plan. So please add that to your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slager.
Greg Carlson, followed by Michael Schallenberger.
Good evening, board. My name is Greg Carlson. I am the Luccumbra PTA president. It's a new position to me, and I'm in over my head. I'm very excited about Luccumbra Junior High. Two years ago, a year ago, when we had to make the decision to send our son Jordan there, whether to do that or to go to La Calena, we applauded, and still to this day applaud the decision to put Joanne Caines as the principal of Luccumbra High, and we're very excited about what we expected to see, having gone through the Adams education. In the last year, a little over a year, we've been all the more pleased at what we've seen. A year ago, I would speak to other parents, and they would say, hey, you know, you got a son who's 12, what school does he go to? Luccumbra. Oh. And that's the end of discussion. It was an awkward position to be in, but I felt strongly about Joanne and her leadership ability, and decided to stick with it. Now, what I find is that when a parent says to me, what school does your child go to? And I say, Luccumbra, they say, oh, I've been hearing great things about that school. Tell me more about it. And I, to me, that is just, it's great and very exciting. I'm very happy to note that attendance is up at Luccumbra, enrollment is up by 20% from 400 to 480.
30 seconds.
I believe that that trend should continue, based on what I see in the community. And my biggest concern with the discussion of moving the academy to Luccumbra is that there might be some kind of a cap placed on the growth potential of Luccumbra due to size restrictions or other types of impacts that come with trying to locate two schools on one campus. So I look forward to working with the board in any way that I can in the coming months to try to evaluate the situation, to try to understand the impacts, and to try to give the parents perspective on the equitability and feasibility of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Michael Schallenberger, followed by Vicki Keoshin.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board and the school district, thank you for letting us voice our concerns. I want to talk to you about Proposition 1D that I believe is coming out in the ballot in November, that's aimed at funding technology and science labs. This is one of Luccumbra's greatest strengths. I am proud to say we are ahead of the curve. What also concerns me is this could be exactly what would be in jeopardy with this move of bringing the academy, all of it, over to Luccumbra. And I know it would not be anybody's aim to do that, and I'm sure on no map would it say, take out the woodshop. But if you look at some of the examples that the district has given us of successful joint use of a facility, we'll take La Calena, that's exactly what happened. They lost their woodshop. The art department needed another room. Because of the impact of open alternative on their campus, taking up classrooms, they chose to put them in the woodshop with no other place to go. Those eighth graders don't have a chance to take industrial tech. They don't have a chance to do a solar electric golf cart or convert a cart to run on vegetable oil, because they don't have the facilities any longer. They used to, but they don't. Galita Valley used to have a metal shop and a small engine shop. They no longer have that, but there's another great school there. The academy is a great program. It is very successful, and they deserve the best. I really believe that you guys should work hard to find a good alternative for them. They need to be united. The one problem I see is the loading numbers you have at Luccumbra, I believe, are outdated, and they don't take into account any of our programs. And they're also based on like-aged students with a like-bell schedule, a junior high loading number, not a 20-to-1 kindergarten number, and not putting second graders in the woodshop. So please, I encourage you, do your best to find a good solution.
Thank you, Mr. Schallenberger.
Followed by Serena Cusaro.
Good evening. Well, I had another topic that I was going to speak on for three minutes, but as I look around the audience, and I feel that I need to divert from that topic. No one's really asked why and how Luccumbra has done such a turnaround. I mean, the teachers there, I've been at Luccumbra for over 20 years, so I've seen teachers come and go, and they're the most incredible, hard-working teachers. I have to actually say, probably the hardest-working teachers in all of Santa Barbara. Why? Because we have a unique population. Our kids, you know, from the West Side, and this is why I've diverted my topic, because I don't see these parents here. They're not here speaking for their school. Our teachers, if you put them into crowded classrooms on the second floor, where they have to share classrooms, where the kids can only be upstairs, they won't be able to tutor the kids after school, use their prep time to reteach, give up their lunch hour. None of this is going to happen. And those kids that really need our attention as educators, they're the losers, not the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keoshin.
Serena Cusaro, followed by Tia Dotson.
Good evening. My name is Serena Cusaro. I have a kindergartner at Monastido Union School, an eighth grader at Luccumbra Junior High, and a junior at Dos Pueblos High School. Last spring, my husband and I visited Luccumbra and met with Joanne Caines and core knowledge teacher Valerie Palmer. We were so impressed by Joanne and her staff and the eclectic and electric atmosphere at Luccumbra that we decided to take our daughter out of the Marymount School and bring her to Luccumbra for her eighth grade year. Daily, we are extremely pleased with the challenges she is being asked to meet, both socially and academically. We are now looking to bring our kindergartner from Monastido Union to join the academy, but would not feel comfortable having her in a building sharing halls and bathrooms with seventh and eighth graders. This year, the staff at Luccumbra has done its utmost to accommodate grades 4 through 6. But without a clear architectural and financial plan for the school's future, I believe it would be a bad idea to further burden the school with more students at such various stages of their developments. Interest is high on Luccumbra. Now, the word is out that the standards and academics are at a very high level. Other families are interested in sending their kids, their junior high schoolers, to Luccumbra's. They will be coming. Give the school's leadership, please, the time and space they need to focus on their evolving success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cusaro. Tia Dotson, followed by Carrie Minadia.
Good evening. I'm a very proud Luccumbra teacher, and I'm really pleased to see all of the teachers
I'm a very proud Lacumbra teacher and I'm really pleased to see all of the teachers out tonight. Thank you. I'm here to talk about an issue that was brought up at the last school board meeting. The issue was that, well, the other junior highs have elementary schools that they are also housing at their campuses. I'd like to bring up a very important point that Pat Salley herself had not thought of. The point is this: we have what is known as a closed campus. We have long hallways where all the doors open up into hallways where all the kids come out. After 47 minutes, a bell rings, four minutes, they get to walk down back and forth to their classes. At La Colina and also at Galita Valley, they have their schools in portables. They do not share a long hallway where all of the doors open up, having the bells go off, four minutes, all of the kids walking back and forth. What concerns me is the thought of having second graders and eighth graders sharing a long hallway. Perhaps that might not be a problem. But the problem that I do see is we have one set of bathrooms for boys and one set of bathrooms for girls upstairs. The thought of 500 students sharing one set of bathrooms is not feasible and not fair to our junior high students. So if they're given the opportunity to go downstairs, then they'll be sharing it with third, fourth, fifth graders, perhaps, sixth graders. Having a son myself, the thought of my son trying to share a urinal, perhaps as a third grader with an eighth grade boy, I don't feel comfortable with that. And I can't imagine that many parents would feel comfortable with that. I just think perhaps there's a rush on moving a very high-performing school, like the academy, to a junior high campus. I feel that they deserve more respect. They should be offered an elementary campus where elementary students are located. I feel that we deserve the respect of being given our opportunity to shine. We are in a wonderful upswing right now. I feel that we deserve a little bit more time to show you all of the changes that we've made under the leadership of Joanne Caines. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dodson.
Carrie Minardio, followed by Harriet Aslan.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Minardio. I've worked for the Santa Barbara School District for the past four years, mainly as a substitute teacher. I'm here on behalf of the community to discuss the proposal of moving the entire community academy to Lacumbra Junior High School. It is common knowledge that the community has not been involved with the decision of moving the academy to Lacumbra. There's been no investigation with how this will affect the community. As well, there's been no investigations with how this will affect traffic in the area, or most importantly, the student safety. Lacumbra has spent the better part of the last two years restoring the bathroom facilities, among other building improvements. If the academy were to move its lower grades to Lacumbra, or if the academy, yes, to Lacumbra, how is the district going to pay for the new facilities when they can't afford to pay their teachers, their complete cost of living increase of only 8 percent? It is now evident to me that all of the work and energy the teachers and staff at Lacumbra Junior High School have so graciously exerted has been for nothing. Excuse me. And with great disappointment, it seems that this proposal is just another political rush to make a decision that will only benefit the people in this room with no thought about the students. When making your final decision, please include both Lacumbra and academy students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minardio.
Harriet Aslan, followed by Michael McGlaughlin.
Hello, my name is Harriet Aslan. I live on Kensha Avenue, and that's near Lacumbra. We feel that more traffic would impact all the neighborhoods around Lacumbra. I attended Lacumbra Junior High in 1937. And they made me a wonderful teacher, too. I didn't teach there, but I taught at Harding. It was a wonderful school then and it's a wonderful school now. And we'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Aslan.
Michael McGlaughlin, followed by Carlos Cohen.
All right, I guess I'm the first one for the teacher salary issue. When I spoke to this board two years ago, my voice was one of passionate frustration. Perhaps you remember me here. That passion has long since disappeared. You see, I believed the board would hear our voices and move away from business as usual. I believed you were with us. I understand now that you are not. You may offer lip service to the contrary, but actions and inactions speak louder than words. Our salaries remain uncompetitive. Looking at neighboring districts, we are at the bottom. Here is the 2005 data. But you knew that when I told you two years ago. You claim we are a priority, but when the time to, you claim with Machiavellian surprise that there are no funds with which to negotiate. Truth is, our salary has been cut for five consecutive years. Here is the data. This is what you have been giving us and calling a base. 2.8 percent pay cut, 1.6 percent pay cut.
Did you speak into the microphones so that the TV camera?
2.8 percent pay cut, 1.6 percent pay cut, .55 percent pay cut, 3.2 percent pay cut, and now, we are operating this year, 7.4 percent pay cut. I don't consider a 7.4 percent pay cut a sign of respect or one that suggests teachers are a priority. Who's bullying who? The relationship between the board and the teachers is damaged. I love this district. I don't want it that way. I'm no longer impassioned, I'm saddened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin.
Carlos Cohen, followed by Marta Ulvaez.
Good evening, fellow colleagues, members of the school board, and Superintendent Dr. Davis, Dr. Sarvis. My name is Carlos Cohen. I'm here because esteemed colleagues have asked me to share the essence of our concerns regarding the current negotiations and because duty compels me. Recently, Dr. Sarvis and Mrs. Cordero published an impressive article in the Santa Barbara News Press that outlined the goals of the Santa Barbara School District. Initially, when I read those goals, I was both proud and pleased that we were taking on those goals. However, my pride and pleasure quickly turned to disappointment when I saw that we were putting the people that could actually carry out those goals last. I thought to myself, how many more qualified teachers are we going to lose? How are we going to recruit some of the newest and brightest to our district? And, most importantly, how is this going to impact the students that we are entrusted to teach every day? When we, the frontline agents of change, the teachers are having to spend our time negotiating over something that should have been taken care of before the school year starts. This reminded me of what I was taught as a young Marine. As a former US Marine and leader of junior Marines, I was given two basic missions. One was to provide for the welfare of my troops, and the second was accomplishment of the mission. I faithfully applied that philosophy to my Marine Corps experience and have carried that into my experience as an educator. As a member of this incredible teaching community, I am proud to say that the colleagues I work with have unselfishly given themselves far above and beyond the call of duty, many times without recognition, and most sadly, most sadly, without professional compensation for professional service. I would never send my junior Marines into combat without support. So tonight, I ask you, as one concerned educator, speaking in unison with my colleagues, to reflect on your responsibility as board and district leaders to support your troops, your frontline agents of change, so that we, together, can carry out the mission of educating the future leaders of our city, our state, and our country. Consider the impact that your decisions will have on everyone. So let's get back to negotiations so we can go back to doing what we do best, and that's educating. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Marta Ulvaez, followed by Carol Hawkes.
My name is Marta Ulvaez, and I am a new teacher at Lacumbra Junior High School. I teach English and social studies. I taught at the Santa Barbara Community Academy for three years, and I loved it. I love the Santa Barbara Community Academy. It's a unique school in so many ways, and it deserves to have a site where it can reside as a healthy and unified elementary school. I know that the staff and families of the academy have been waiting a very long time to find a location that will accommodate its growing numbers. But rushing to make a decision now, particularly one that involves moving the entire school to the Lacumbra campus, is a serious mistake. There are major problems with the proposed move to Lacumbra, and I'll mention just a couple. When the academy was split last year, I was among those who made the move to Lacumbra. We were given beautiful, large classrooms with windows, access to the Lacumbra library, large open fields, and so much more. There were clearly many advantages to being on a real school campus. There were also major drawbacks. The junior high school is on a bell schedule, and even though bells didn't ring in our rooms or in our hallway, the sound was always jarring and disruptive to a lesson in progress. Students never seemed to get used to the interruption of bells and messages broadcast over the intercom. While fourth through sixth graders might be able to muster the self-control to stay focused in spite of the bells throughout the day, I would imagine it would be very difficult for kindergartners or first graders to adapt to them. The windows of four of the academy classrooms face the quad area where the junior high school students have their lunch break from 11:53 to 12:28, a short period when they eat and socialize. And they need and deserve to be able to make some noise at that time. During those 35 minutes, the noise level outside was so loud that it was impossible to deliver any instruction, and, believe me, I tried. Even with independent reading or other projects, the students had difficulty concentrating and staying on task, and that was even with the metal shutters closed. That meant that 35 minutes of instructional time were lost every day. Is this fair to the academy students? The only way to have a healthy and mutually satisfactory coexistence on the Lacumbra campus, a move that seems already to have been decided...
Ms. Slager, I need to have you wrap up.
Yes, this is wrapping up. Would be for the academy to be in its own enclave, far enough removed from the junior high school so that neither school would be compromised in carrying out its responsibilities and service to the students and the community.
Thank you, Ms. Slager.
Carol Hawkes, followed by Lynn Robinson.
And I'll again remind people to please try to adhere to the time limits so that we can get everybody in. We still have several more speakers.
Good evening. My name is Carol Hawkes. I'm a parent of an eighth grade student at Lacumbra. I'm also a parent of two children at Washington School, which is a feeder school to Lacumbra. I'm also a parent of a junior at Bishop High School. The concept of the academy was to be a downtown school originally. That changed when you moved part of it to Lacumbra. And now the board is considering moving the entire school into Lacumbra's building. I have to wonder if the board is under pressure to keep a school going at any cost. Have you seriously considered how this major shift to the west side will affect Harding and already struggling school? And have you considered moving it to Cleveland, a school that is under-enrolled and is already a year-round school? From a logistic and financial standpoint, this appears to make a lot of sense and one worth analyzing. And most of all, how will this move affect Lacumbra Junior High and the potential growth of Lacumbra as a junior high? Last year, the focus of this board was to increase Lacumbra's enrollment from the feeder schools. You did that by hiring Joanne Caines. She has done an incredible job with her teachers, and the enrollment has significantly increased. But just by approving this concept of moving the academy to Lacumbra, you're already having a detrimental effect on future Lacumbra parents. A Washington parent asked me today, oh, we are planning to go to Lacumbra, what's going to happen now? Thirdly, based on the number of sixth graders possibly feeding into Lacumbra Junior High next year, Lacumbra may very possibly have a total of 560 junior high students. Where are they going to fit if there's an elementary school in the same building? And as a parent of a feeder school, will I even be able to get into Lacumbra in the future? This is a big concern to me and other parents at Washington School. A year and a half ago, I made what I thought was a huge decision to send my daughter to Lacumbra. She was supposed to attend La Colina. I went to Lacumbra because of Ms. Caines, because of the teachers, and to buck the trend. We're very proud of what we did. It's been a wonderful experience, and I'd like to see future parents be able to do the same things that we did because the school is definitely on an upswing, and let's continue that.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkes.
Lynn Robinson, followed by Lynn McMillan.
Again, please try to adhere to the time limits. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing my comments. So basically, in this school district, the issue is usually declining enrollment, whether it's people moving out of the state, people going to private instruction, or transferring to other districts. I think the core of that problem is solved by having gem schools, so your Washington-type school, Peabody. Lacumbra is a diamond in the rough. It's a gem. The community academy is a gem. But if you put them together, you cheapen and you dilute their strength. They each need to be on their own. That community academy could be, you know, full of kids if it's given its due. And so I just wanted to say, you know, please think carefully about maybe combining the four schools with declining enrollment and giving the community academy its own place to flourish and to pull from the private education and the transfers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Jim McMillan, followed by Lauren Wagner.
Mr. McMillan? Okay, I believe he left. We'll go on to the next speaker. Lauren Wagner. Okay. Thank you very much.
Then Lauren Rodriguez. Yeah, that's you. I'll tell, you're going to say who follows you?
Yeah. Actually, I'm here to introduce some of my students. I am a Lacumbra middle school, or junior high school teacher. I teach English and history. And we have a huge number of Lacumbra students here who want to voice their opinions. And I'd really like to encourage you all to think of them as people. Because I know we've heard a lot of talk about the numbers and loading numbers and capacity, but these are students who are really, truly getting a phenomenal education because of low class sizes, because of all the classrooms that are available to them. And so I have a number of them here to speak with us today. They're here to practice their freedom of speech, and I hope that you're as impressed with them as I am. But before I do that, I need to give you the minutes of a meeting that we had with Pat Salley and Jen Zettel. So I'll pass that over. And I'd like to introduce some of my students who are going to come up to speak. Kathy Moreno, I think, is going to be first, right?
Hi, my name is Kathy. I'm an eighth grader at Lacumbra Junior High. I came to talk about the academy move to Lacumbra. Here are five of the many concerns that we, the students, have. One, we like our school the way it is. It is growing, and the space that we will be giving up, we may need it later on. Two, we also think that Lacumbra should have a say in this, not just the academy. We are proud of our technology program and our band program. The technology program is largest in all of Santa Barbara, and our program helps show our school spirit in parades. Three, if the academy is here at Lacumbra, then we will have different lunch periods, and we have our ASB activities during lunch, which we play music, we are sometimes loud, and it would disrupt the classes for the academy and for our classes when we're in session. Four, right now, the traffic isn't too bad, but there are a lot more cars and more traffic. Sometimes cars don't see the bikes or the students walking. We've already had a couple of kids almost hit. And five, we only have four bathrooms right now. If the academy uses two of them, then we won't have enough for us. So please, think about us, Lacumbra students, because we also want to have our voice heard.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno.
Paul Mercurio, followed by Virginia Soto.
Good evening. My name is Paul Mercurio. I'm an eighth grader at Lacumbra Junior High. And I came to speak for the same reason that Kathy did. And I believe it is unfair that just as Ms. Caines is turning our school around, that they are trying to hold us back from that. And one of the reasons why I attended Lacumbra and my parents decided to put me here is because it was small, class sizes are small, and you get to have a good relationship with your teachers, more interaction with your teachers. Also, this would, I believe, take up 12 classrooms, possibly including the woodshop, which is my personal favorite class. It's very hands- It's very hands-on. And also, most, if not all, of the first-floor class facility, parts of the field and other campus resources. I'm not only concerned for our sake, but also the young children who would be moving in because our school, it doesn't have much but a little of, like, a push and a shove around here and there. Just some behavior that I don't think kindergarteners or 6th graders should be exposed to quite yet. This is also a follow-up to Ms. Dodson. I attended the school on the same campus as Lachalina, OAS, for six years. And it's, Lachalina's very spread out, so it's not, you don't, so it's not, you don't have much interaction with the 7th and 8th graders there. But just the interaction that we did have going to and from school was intimidating. And that was even with my parents, so. Yeah, a little freaky, so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mercurio. Virginia Soto followed by Dylan Fitzgibbons.
Good evening. My name is Virginia Soto, and I'm here because I am concerned about the proposal that is being made for the Santa Barbara Community Academy to be moved into Lacumbra Junior High. I am an 8th grader, and I have seen a change in the numbers of students, which proves that we are a growing school. If you went to our campus, you would see that it's almost impossible for us to stay away from the community kids. And since we were, I'll be on the top floor, we would have to get to P, which means coming across the Santa Barbara Community Academy students. Also, I am not only concerned about me, but also about the younger kids. I have a little niece, and she does a lot of the things that I do, so I have to be a role model for her. But not all junior high kids think the same way. Well, thank you for your time, and I hope you consider this a little bit more.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Dylan Fitzgibbons followed by Kira Esperaza.
Hi, my name is Dylan Fitzgibbons, and I came concerning the wood shop will be taken up by the Community Academy. And wood shop is probably my favorite class, just one of those things that I look forward to in the day, knowing that I'll learn something new and have fun with the project I'm doing. Also, like Paul, I came from OAS, and walking through Lachalina was intimidating, just to be with the kids that were older than me and, uh, yeah. Also, I heard that they may also take up the library and computer labs. I think those are also really great resources that the school has to offer, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Kira Esperaza followed by Laurel Lyle.
Good evening. My name is Kira Esperaza, and I'm an 8th grader at Lacumbra Junior High. What comes to your mind when you say junior high? You think of 13 and 14-year-olds getting a lot of homework and going through puberty, right? Yeah, well, picture this. 13 and 14-year-olds getting lots of homework and kindergarteners. Weird, huh? Well, that's what might happen next year. Lacumbra Junior High might and probably will house the rest of the Santa Barbara Academy. Things might change, and in my opinion, for the worse. One of the reasons most people come to Lacumbra High is because the population and the small classes. If the rest of the academy comes, then most likely, they will get the downstairs of the school. This means that the 8th and 7th graders will get moved upstairs. So in result, there will be more students in each class. We come here for as small as a part of classes. That's one of the main reasons I came here. At Lacumbra Junior High, we have some pretty cool electives that students can enjoy. I knew this before I made my choice coming here. It was another reason that I came here. I personally have shop with Mrs. Schall, who is an awesome teacher. If the rest of the academy comes to our campus, we would more than likely have to get rid of this elective, among others. That's not very fair, is it? And is this really what they want? I know it's what the parents and teachers want, but what about the people who matter? The children? Little kids are intimidated by the big kids. I remember when I was little, they scared me, and it was extremely hard for the junior high kids to ignore them. Let's face it, sometimes we don't watch where we're going, and it would not be safe for the little kids when we cross paths. We cannot avoid them. It is not fair that the board has kept this from Lacumbra students. The board has swept this under the rug. This was proposed when the junior high was out of session on summer vacation. Our principal, Ms. Johns Caines, has worked incredibly hard to bring up Lacumbra where it is now. She has done a tremendous job. We are thriving and growing. Just this year, we gained about 80 students. And for what? To be brought back down again where we were five years ago? No. True, next year, the present 8th graders will not be at Lacumbra Junior High, but right now, this is our school, and we are fighting for this.
Thank you, Ms. Esperaza.
Hello, board members. Dr. Sarvas, my name is Laurel Lyle, and I am the executive chef of the Peabody Charter School cafeteria. At the September 26th board meeting, during presentation and following questions by board members concerning the expansion of the main production kitchen at Santa Barbara High School, our cafeteria program at Peabody was mentioned several times, and it was heartening to hear your comments of support. Peabody operates an independent food program, but we are part of the Santa Barbara School District. We serve the same children and function in the same economic environment. The program that we have developed at Peabody Charter School is a replicable model. We are not an anomaly. Contrary to statements made at the last board meeting that Peabody Charter School supplements the funding of our cafeteria, actually, Peabody Charter School is supplemented by our school cafeteria. Our lunch prices are lower than other schools in the district. Our cafeteria staff salaries comply with the district pay scale. We compensate the district for services rendered on our behalf, and we end every fiscal year in the black. Over the past 12 years, the cafeteria has provided more than $7,000 of in-kind services annually, including things like science camp scholarships by purchasing produce grown in the school, the 6th-grade garden, healthy snacks for students during testing, cooking classes, and field trips to local farms and farmers' markets. We've spent nearly $5,000 annually to equip and maintain our kitchen facility, and we've built an $85,000 budgetary reserve for long-term renovation. In short, we're more than self-sustaining. We're an asset. There's no secret to our success, just a few key ingredients. We have an onsite kitchen where students see and smell real food being cooked daily. We make simple food from scratch using fresh wholesome ingredients. We use the wealth of local organic produce, which is available throughout the year in our community, and we integrate our school garden into our lunch program on a daily basis and provide culinary opportunities to support the school curriculum. Dr. Sarvas stated that, okay, I'm out of time. I hope that you will seriously, seriously consider the impact of a centralized kitchen and know that onsite cafeterias are not a freak occurrence, that we've been doing it for 12 years, and it can be done.
Thank you, Ms. Lyle, and you may submit your comments to the board if you would like. Jessie Burnell followed by Tracy Burnell.
Hi, my name's Jessie. I used to go to, I was a previous student at OAS last year, so I know what it's like to be at a small school. And it talked about what it was like with Lachalina on the other campus, but also, our school wanted them up to 8th grade, so we had to deal with that, too. And when I was like a kindergartner and, you know, a couple of grades older, I was kind of scared to have those older kids around, you know? Even like if I didn't hang out with them, it was still kind of intimidating to have them around the campus. Plus, you know, lots of people here have mentioned this, but like, there's going to be like, you know, lots of cool programs that Lacumbra has are going to be taken away if they get moved up a floor, because there'll be, you know, less classrooms, so they'll have to improvise, making way of some of the programs to make, you know, way for the more main subjects like English and math and stuff. But, plus, some of the teachers that are really cool at Lacumbra might be taken away, even if there are like, you know, math teachers or something, just because, you know, they don't have enough room. And, you know, there's lots of teachers here that are really cool and lots of programs. That's one of the main reasons I came to Lacumbra, and I really wouldn't want to see that kind of thing taken away, because that's what really made this cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Burnell. Tracy Burnell followed by Arjun Sarkar.
Hi, I'm Tracy Burnell, obviously a parent of a student at Lacumbra. And I guess what's got me the most upset is the lack of information that's come out and the fact that this happened during the summer. We checked this out very carefully. We are not in the Lacumbra District, and I guess one of the strongest senses I have is one of betrayal. My first phone call this morning was to Joanne, and my question was, did you know about this last year when we were checking out Lacumbra? And she assured me that she did not, because I think we would probably not have chosen to go there. And as some of the previous people have mentioned, I'm sure the article in the paper is turning people away quickly who were considering going, so. I think Mr. Hawes was the one that mentioned that he thought it was, the word negligent, and that's what comes to mind for me. Being around the campus and seeing how it works there, it seems outrageous to talk about bringing those kids in and losing. The list of things that they talked about losing were all of the great things at the school. And I intend to get as involved as I can and learn more about it. I don't know enough to carry on an intelligent conversation, really, but I intend to find out more, and I'm angry that there hasn't been more opportunity to know more about what's happening and have input. And there was an article last summer about wanting to turn Lacumbra into a complete community academy school. So I'm suspicious of the motives and what's going on here, and I want to know more about it and be given that opportunity, because it's an important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnell. Arjun Sarkar followed by Leslie Ayala.
Oh, thank you, board and Dr. Sarvas and staff. What I want to just say is it's a kind of a different thing. I have an 8th, I have a 7th grader at Lacumbra now, and I've been involved in the master planning process, as you know, for quite a while. And what I kind of want to just give a little different perspective in terms of what I'm viewing is basically, you know, what I'm thinking of is community. Community of the academy, the Community Academy, but not the word Community Academy. I'm talking about just community building and community. Community and Lacumbra Junior High, I am now not actually one of the people on the board of the PTA there. I'm the parliamentarian of the PTA. And so I'm getting involved a little bit over there. And what I would just want to make a point of is that this, as we move forward with this, during the summer, there was, over the past years, there's been lots of public input towards the master plan. And the support of this board towards the master planning and the public input that they have, that we have been able to give with Open Alternative School, because also I have a son at Open Alternative School. So through that process, this summer, last summer, I was almost done with public input, because we had so many opportunities for public input. So I just want to stress that I think that there is going to be plenty of opportunity for public input on this.
Thirty seconds.
I know that there's not, it's not on the agenda, and that we can't have a dialogue here. So my thing for the Community Academy, Lacumbra, the board, and the district is to working together as a community in support of this so that the students do end up getting the benefit in both schools, and that they work together through the process and come out with a win-win for everybody. So that was, that's what I'm, that's what I'm supporting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sarkar. Leslie Ayala followed by Carolyn Renard.
Good evening, Dr. Sarvas and the board. I'm Leslie Ayala. I am a parent of an 8th grader at Lacumbra. I am also a K-1 teacher at Franklin School, and I have two boys that just graduated a few years ago from Lacumbra. And I'm very concerned about the proposal of the academy coming to Lacumbra. My two older boys enjoyed music at Harding School and then at Lacumbra, and then they went on to San Marcos and were in the marching band, the concert band, and drum line. They got to go to New York, and they got to do all kinds of fantastic things. My 8th grader is enjoying being in wood shop and all the things that Lacumbra offers. My sons would not have been able to go on to music had they not had the music that they had at Lacumbra. They were well-educated, and I feel that it's a big mistake to have younger kids, as being a K-1 teacher, having younger kids be in with the older kids. And I just think it's unfair now that Lacumbra's up, going up on the upswing, and now to have the, all the complications of having another school on the same campus. So I hope you'll reconsider and give each school the dignity and the benefit of being on a different campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. And last, Carolyn Renard.
I'll be speaking on issues regarding the discussions of the changes in the expulsion process discussed at past board meetings. As you know, the changes, the board has been requesting significantly-
I'm sorry, Ms. Renard, you need to take that item at the time of the item on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I can speak on any, I don't want you to interrupt me with this. Again, Ms. Cordero, I can speak on any item under the board's jurisdiction at this public comment time.
Ms. Renard, I'll read to you where it says that it needs to be on a topic that's not on the agenda.
Well, that's written illegally, and I've tried to point that out to you before. I have the right to speak on any issue-
Okay, I'm sorry. I will declare you-
And this is not on the agenda. This is not on the agenda. Past board meeting discussions of the expulsion process is not on the agenda.
The expulsion process is on the agenda.
No, the policies for the expulsion process being presented to you are on the agenda tonight, not the issue I'm raising now.
If you are talking about the expulsion process-
I'm not. I'm not talking about these policies that are on the agenda tonight.
Okay, you may proceed.
Thank you.
You will have two minutes.
Just give me a minute here to collect myself after that.
You have two minutes.
This is the third time you've done this to me. As you know, the past discussions and what the board has been requesting significantly limit the rights of families to appeal expulsion decisions to the board. At the last meeting, this was discussed on August 29th, Ms. Cordero expressed concern that Hispanic families could be quite disadvantaged by these new policies. I then asked her why, if she was so concerned about these families, did she vote for a policy that no longer allowed families to appeal expulsion decisions to the board? Ms. Cordero replied that, "We haven't voted on any policy yet." I want to remind Ms. Cordero that on June 13th, 2006, the board voted for Option 2, presented by Mr. Gonzalez, district administrator. Option 2 states that the board will make their decision, quote, "without permitting the student and his or her parents to make a presentation to the board," unquote. You did vote for this, Ms. Cordero, and so did Ms. Harder, who now is expressing concern for families. It was only because of my outspoken objections that you didn't vote this policy in the last time, at the last meeting this was presented to you, and now have a different proposal being presented tonight. If you were going to, I wanted to, in fact, if you're going to vote for the present policies recommended tonight, you will have to retract the June 13 vote first, because it did not allow for any presentations to the board by families. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. We will now take a brief recess, and we will resume with our consent, I'm sorry, yes, our consent agenda. We will. Okay, on the consent agenda, do we have any items we'd like to pull?
May I give you a correction on D8? The correction is the funding source is 1,250 per school, not 2,250. And 1,250 times four adds up to 5,000, just like it's shown.
Okay, thank you.
And number D11 is being pulled.
Okay.
You didn't have the item in advance.
Thank you.
And you will need that in order to consider it.
Thank you.
And a small correction on D12, it just repeats itself twice, right? We're not missing anything there, right?
No.
Okay.
And can I just, one more thing before we, that on, what is this, D9 on the, that we have a retirement. Judy Serena has been with the district for over 24 years as secretary at DP. Just want to honor that.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I will move to accept the consent agenda.
To approve.
Approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we approve the consent agenda as noted. That brings us to the- That brings us to the action agenda. Item E1, approval of, I'm sorry, oh, approval of Edgiosoft Data Management System Contract License Agreement to Allow Teachers to Administer Benchmark Exams, Track Student Performance, and Analyze State Assessment Results.
Well, this is an item that we discussed at our last meeting. We brought it back with more information, and we have it on tonight for possible board action. Jan Zettel, our Assistant Superintendent at Secondary Education, will make the presentation.
Zettel.
I'm sorry.
You had a deja vu.
I was into past administrators tonight.
I was going to get it, let it go, Dr. Sarvis.
Stan would have been proud of it, though, wouldn't he? Jan Zettel.
Thank you.
Stan Zettel?
Stan Zettel.
Stan. Thank you. I'm glad to bring this back to the board. I have added some additional background based on some of your questions from the previous conference agenda.
I'm sorry, Mr. Zettel, can I just, I really apologize for interrupting you. I would like to do, since it's already a late hour, I'd like to do this before we go any further. It is our custom to introduce the candidates for school board who are in our audience, and we have three candidates in the audience, Kate Parker, Suzie Coffin, and Roseanne Crawford. And we have one candidate on the board, Bob Noel. So, thank you. Thank you for your interest in serving on our board. Okay, I'm sorry for the interruption.
That's fine, thank you. To let all of you know, the secondary district has been investigating software tools that will allow teachers and administrators to analyze student assessments for the last several years. Well, we've looked very carefully into the types of relational databases that would give us the kind of tool that is, number one, simple to use, but yet complex in the type of data that we can pull from it. We've looked at databases from ETS Pullam, from CTB McGraw-Hill, from a company that is actually statewide that started in Reading, DataWorks, and now Edgiosoft. Edgiosoft is being used in many, many districts throughout this state to great result. I just had a nice report from Mr. Morgan, our principal at San Marcos High, who was speaking with an Oxnard principal, and that principal attributed their gains to Edgiosoft as one of the factors. So I was very pleased with that. The cost, I have been able to outline for you here, we're going to be using funds from TIG, the Targeted Instructional Improvement Block Grant, and from EIA. Thirty percent from EIA, and 70% of the cost will come from the TIG grant. And I've outlined that on that last page. But I also have some other concerns that I know that you are probably sharing. And that concern comes with any kind of new technology or software that comes to a district. Are the teachers going to use it? And I, and is there a call for it? And I brought along and invited tonight to speak two teachers and two of our principals. And I think, let's see, who's still in the audience here? There's, yes, we're here. I'd like to invite, let's start back in the back with Paul and Wayne, if you would come forward, and then we'll have Mark and Amy come on up.
Me? Please. Now, green means, what?
Green means godon.
Okay, there you go. It's actually all of, for the record, but close enough. Wayne Cole, I'm the math department chairman at Santa Barbara High School. It's my 35th year in the district, and I'm here to give you some reasons from a teacher perspective why we like Edgiosoft. Last fall, several of us at Santa Barbara High accompanied our then-brand-new principal to a conference on data teams. It was this conference that laid the foundation for using data to modify and monitor our teaching at Santa Barbara High School. Previous to this, we'd have to wait for the following school year to see how our kids had done, and that didn't make any sense. So we got going. We began using teacher devised, standard-based, quarterly common assessments. I would then compile the results, Excel spreadsheets, and distribute reports. Teachers could then assess how their students were doing compared to the rest of the department, which standards needed more attention, which students needed more attention, which methods of instruction were more effective, and just importantly, it gave us opportunities to celebrate our successes. We identified some problems, we also identified some successes. The problem was, this was a lot of work, and our principal had a motto, it was "work smarter, not harder." And we felt like we were working harder. Smarter equals Edgiosoft. Edgiosoft creates infinitely many assessments customized for each state standard. It does the grading, creates useful reports, even recommends materials for reteaching. When you visit a doctor for a physical, he doesn't invent the test, he just picks one out from a battery of tests. He doesn't compile the results. They come back in a form that both he and the patient can understand. You don't get below basic in cholesterol or proficient in blood pressure six months after your test, and that's what we were getting, right? The results returned to you in a timely manner on a bar graph that everybody can understand. Edgiosoft will do the same sorts of things for teachers. Help us to work smarter. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Now you know why I spend most of my time in the math department office. The crux of the matter, as I understand it is, is this going to be something that will be used and not the next thing that we spend a wad of cash on and then gently placed on an excellent shelf somewhere and just forgotten about? I don't honestly think it's going to be forgotten. Right now, the teachers are using all kinds of time and all kinds of tools to piece together several different things. I spent four and a half hours this morning, for example, looking at an Excel spreadsheet and trying to get the teacher data rosters just so because there isn't the time and resources, there aren't the time and resources available down at the district office now. Four and a half hours in my particular office could be spent wisely in other places like classrooms. As far as Edgiosoft is concerned, I do believe honestly that this is the kind of thing that we'll be able to wrap up tightly and succinctly all the tools that we need, use it in a way that's intuitive for teachers, and use it in a way that they understand. And a very brief anecdote, yesterday in our department chair meeting, I gave an Excel session, I suppose, a little learning session on how to use autofilters in Excel to our department chairs. And at the end of the meeting, it was along the lines of, "Do you honestly expect us to do this much with this?" And the answer was, "Until we have something like Edgiosoft, yes, I do." And the data that you obtain from that kind of thing will change the face of teaching because as a teacher in English or any other subject, I can approach my students, understanding before I get there what their needs are, and then I can plan accordingly. Right now, we get information sometimes two weeks before the year begins from our CST scores, and that's not necessarily sufficient, so.
Great. Thanks, Paul and Wayne, I appreciate that. Mark and Amy.
Hi, I'm Amy Wolfslaw, teacher at Dos Pueblos. In terms of STAR, CASI, AYP, API, closing the achievement gap, both for our socioeconomically disadvantaged, our EL learners, these are all things that teachers are presented with on a daily basis. Having the ability at the beginning of the year to sit down, look at my students from last year and my curriculum and say, hm, this is where I could have improved my teaching. These were the things that were successful. I can tweak my curriculum, and I can go back into the new year and also look at the students that I have for this year. So if I have another English 11 class, I can say, okay, these students that are coming to me now, they need more reading comprehension, they need less, you know, maybe writing strategies. Those are the kind of things that Edgiosoft can give me. Excuse me, it's been a long day. And also in terms of my EL students, I'd be able to look at, okay, last year on CASI, they didn't pass, what do they need? Do they need more reading comprehension or whatever? These are the kind of tools that Edgiosoft can provide for me. In terms of professional learning communities, already at Dos Pueblos, we have course-alike teacher communities, and this would enable us to have benchmarks that we could have, you know, benchmark assessments that we could use at the beginning of the year, at the middle of the year, at the end of the year, and so we can start to track and see where we can improve our teaching, where can, you know, we look at the successes. And so I think this is a great tool and one that we really need to do our job, so I hope that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We talk a lot about using data to inform instruction and the importance in doing that. Unfortunately, the data that we get is not very timely in most cases. You know, getting STAR results and getting them rerostered and getting them in our hands to be able to get into the hands of the teachers so that they can analyze the data and use it often doesn't happen until midway through the first quarter, if not the first semester of the school year. That means that we've lost five, maybe six weeks of instruction, if not more, where we could have been using that data if we'd had it in a more timely fashion. Now, part of that is the responsibility of the state to get it back to us earlier. It'd be great if we could have that at our pre-service days in August to be looking at data and making plans for the school year. We know that doesn't happen, isn't likely to happen, but what Edgiosoft would give us the ability to do would be to, maybe not with that exact data, but create our own assessments, course-alike groups, working in teams, writing common assessments. You know, the trend is, has gone past just simply using annual assessments. We're into that mode of continuous monitoring of our progress and looking at data quarterly, monthly, even in some cases, some departments meet weekly to talk about instruction and curriculum. Being able to use a tool that would allow them to, you know, they've been working very hard creating common assessments and talking about these subjects, but it's all mostly anecdotal because, or what's not anecdotal is very laborious in terms of the spreadsheets that Paul referred to in trying to compile data. So a product like Edgiosoft, you know, I haven't done the research on all the products available, but this one comes very highly respected. The things that it's touted to be able to do are things that would unquestionably be of great use to teachers and would not be something that I believe our teachers would push aside. The banks of standards-aligned questions that they can draw from to draw, to create better exams, the plain paper scanning, the data results instantaneously, all of those things compiled with the things that we could draw out of the state data would really make it possible for us to use and analyze data. I've been talking about Edgiosoft since the first staff meeting because I found about this when I came to the district in July and got very excited about it because it was a tool that I have not had in the past and was looking very much forward to having, so I've been talking it up with the teachers. You know, with very few exceptions, there's a buzz of excitement about having this kind of data and this kind of access to this kind of data. So, you know, if that counts for anything, I would highly recommend that we go ahead and approve that and get it on the teachers' computers and in their hands as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have questions?
Are there questions on this item from the board? Dr. Noel?
Yes. I'm still a little confused. This is described as an assessment management system, and it talks about benchmark exams. It also talks about state exams. I understand state exams, and I understand where the data come from and how often, and I presume that this system lets us massage those data, and that that's all very straightforward. Benchmark exams, I don't fully understand, and I don't understand it because the district, the text that you have here seems to suggest that the, those exams come with the product. And I look at the contract, and it's, I see it in a table, Edgiosoft system component included, it says benchmark exams. Okay? Now, does that mean, what does that mean?
Maybe I can help with that a little bit. Edgiosoft is part of the Riverside Publishing Company, and as such, they have license agreements with just about all of our program math, with MacDougalatelle, with Houghton Mifflin, with Holt, with Open Court, with a number of publishing companies. And what those publishing companies have supplied is a bank of questions aligned to the state standards in grades K-12. So that a teacher who wishes in those course-alike teams, for example, Algebra I at Dos Pueblos High School, the teachers can get together and say, "We want to give benchmark exams at the end of each chapter. We're going to create benchmark exams based on the state standards that we taught during that chapter, and we're going to, you know, use Edgiosoft to create out of the bank that they have those tests."
So the teacher selects the items?
The teacher.
From the pool?
Would select the items from the pool, correct. And for each.
So there needn't even be agreement among teachers? I mean, one teacher can go in and select items for one class, or are we going to also then start, move toward having a common exam for?
It's the intent of this office and the intent of our principals to have common exams across the district.
And I presume then that the, because exams get dated and item pools get dated, that this includes, my question I have over here is that, does this include regular updates as long as the contract lasts?
Yes, as long as the contract lasts, we get regular updates. I was interested in how they managed all of this, and so we got into a long discussion about how test banks are created, how test questions are created and vetted. And it's, I was impressed about how much it takes to write one test question that is, you know, something that's going to work. And teachers are going to be able to have just incredible item analysis out of these tests also. As they look at their students, they look at the subgroups of their students and how they did on each one of these items. So it's a very rich bank. It's one that I am very comfortable with after, my wife worked for CTB McGraw-Hill and they're testing corporation, and so I know all about, you know, that piece of it. And I'm very comfortable with Edgiosoft and Riverside Publishing and the test banks that they have and their validity.
Can one assemble, or can a group of teachers assemble, I got this now, like end-of-the-chapter questions? What about end-of-the-course questions that are comprehensive in scope?
Absolutely.
Looking retrospectively at the whole course?
Absolutely. For each one of the state standards, there is a, what did they tell me, something like 10 to 13 test questions for each one of those standard pieces.
Next question.
And you can choose any one of those, you can save the benchmark test, you can save the end-of-course test, and it's housed on the server.
I can envision all of that, given the capability.
Okay.
What I can't envision is, does this system read essay exams?
It does not read essay exams.
So that is one.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Well, actually, the University of Colorado has been working on what they call the Intelligent Essay Analyzer, which they claim does with some considerable reliability, read essays, but that's another issue.
Okay.
And it costs a fortune to teach the machine all the answers, or how to read them, anyway. That's not, I am concerned about that, and I think anybody who's taught is always concerned about the qualitative difference between discrete item responses and open-ended essay questions. Let me just go quickly to the economic, to the funding. I try very hard to monitor how we spend our categorical funds, and it is very hard for a couple of reasons. First of all, I don't know a lot about the educational technology program. Is that a categorical program from the state of California? You're going to spend $188,000? No, how much?
No, I'm going to spend $81,000. The current balance of that account is 188.
So you're going to spend $81,000 out of that account?
Yes.
And that. And, and that, that program, is that, is that applied for on the CONAP like everything else?
That, I don't believe is on the CONAP. But as I went through the list of what can be expended, educational technology was one of the items that it could be expended out of.
Well, being on the CONAP then subject, makes it subject to the 15 or 85 percent rule typically, or, or the direct services to students rule. And so this is, would not be-
No, this is a state.
All right. The Economic Impact Aid, I always have the impression that that is EIA slash LEP. Has that changed?
We can get a quick read from-
And the reason being that my, the last time I read the, the state, on the state website, the program description for EIA lab-
You're correct. You're used to seeing-
It said it was very much for English language learners.
You're used to seeing it together, but it is not the same thing.
It's not together now.
Just to clarify, historically, it has been assumed in our district that EIA is specifically for English learners. However, a very careful examination of the CONAP will indicate that indeed, these are not monies specifically earmarked for English learners. They are specifically earmarked for students who are not achieving at the basic proficiency level. And so a good, the best way to understand it is, at the present time, EIA is a state equivalent of Title I.
Ah. So that has changed?
In fact, it has never changed. It was just an assumption within the district that we were receiving EIA slash LEP funds. That is not the case.
Oh, okay. Well, that's very helpful. My last question is, is always the one that I can never figure out. How this cumulatively counts on the direct service for students ratio, the 85 percent ratio. And I can never figure it out because you have to see the whole before you can understand the parts. And we, and we always just see it part at a time. And, and just if you can help find a way of presenting these kinds of budget figures in a context that lets us keep track of where we are. I feel it's a part of my fiduciary responsibilities to, to know that. And then if it looks like we're, we're spending too much on, on things that are not direct services to students, as those are defined, to then say, pay attention, we should, we should be careful about that. So it's, in a sense, I'm asking if we could somehow have these, have this, these kind of item-by-item reports like this put into a context that would let us and let the public understand where we stand in terms of the, of the, what the law allows and doesn't allow. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Ms. Malikov?
So this isn't considered a not-direct intervention with children? This is not considered, as Dr. Noel was just saying? Or is it considered?
Parts of it are a direct intervention. Parts of it are creating a test and handing that test to children to take. Parts of it are, after the test is over and it's been analyzed, creating work for children on the items that were not, that the student had trouble with. Actually, it can be differentiated homework, where Johnny Jones can be handed a sheet of homework to do based on the test items that they didn't get. So it is direct service in many parts of it. The other parts of it are teacher tools and administrator tools.
That's would be hard to separate out.
Hard to separate out.
My question was more about the technology, that I realized this is something from the internet, which makes it much more accessible. But do we have the technology, the capability of, of using this? Do teachers have computers in their class, access to the internet everywhere? Is it, this is just the secondary?
This is just the secondary level. And yes, we do.
And we have the scanners and so forth?
Absolutely. We will have the scanners. Each of our high schools will get two scanners. Now, these, this is just magical to me, you know, amazed constantly at the new technologies. These are $300 scanners that can take a stack of student tests, within two minutes, scan them, score them, and send the information to the website for teachers to then analyze in any way they wish, you know, to analyze item analysis on the test, to look at their students, just like that.
Does, the scanners are part of the deal? Or is that a separate acquisition?
We're going to be buying the scanners at their price through them. They're, but we assured the schools that we would also be, we haven't looked into that piece of it yet.
How much extra are the scanners?
About 300 apiece.
Yeah, scanners are not part of this contract.
And, and how many do we have to buy?
We have to buy six, 10.
10. $3,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sounds like a great, a great tool.
Ms. Rodriguez? I'm sorry. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you for answering the question so far, and thanks for the little bit of background that you added to the memo. I appreciated getting a fuller picture of what we're doing. I have a question. I had some other questions that have been answered already, but in the recommendation you talk about, we'll review the three-year contract, but we can review it next June and determine if it's, no, June of 2008. What will we, how will we determine if it's successful? Is this going to be based on teacher feedback?
This will be based on teacher feedback and survey. And what I would like to do, I'm especially interested in our English Language Arts and Math teachers and their use of this tool. It, it probably will not be used by every single teacher, although it could be and should be. But we're going to begin, you know, with, with the critical departments and train them. And the training is provided by Edgusoft as part of the package. And I, I would say that the evaluation will be surveys that we give to them. And then we can take that information back. We can look at the number of hits on the website, you know, for how often it's being used. We can look at, do they have and have they used these benchmark exams? We can, we can go directly to our scores and look at our scores. Has this helped us to improve? We didn't have it this year. Next year, will it help, help us improve? So we can look at it a number of ways. And I leave that to Davis, because he's just brilliant with evaluation.
So to follow that up, so is there going to be a threshold of, well, if 20% of the teachers use it, 100% of the, I mean, what, how will we determine?
Well, I, I think we're going to have to look carefully at that. This is a large expenditure. And it will be over a three-year time period, although we can review it at any point and, and back out of the contract at the end of one year or two years. And we re-up it again at three.
Let me offer a perspective on that as well. As part of the board focus goals, we have the continuous monitoring of students. And that's a consistent theme in all of the literature about effective schools, about schools making great gains, about the 90-90-90 schools. In order to have the continuous monitoring, we should really measure this against how far we've come in developing those assessments and using those assessments on a, on a consistent basis. So we've set out goals, and you saw that in the last plan, the plan for reaching the board focus goals, to develop continuous assessments that are common across the district, that occur at frequent intervals across the district. And that's really our standard. So when we evaluate ourselves, it will be on the basis of how well we've been able to accomplish that.
Let me ask Ms. Rodriguez back in my kind of question. I love, why don't we go a little, see what I, what I didn't hear in the answer is, are we going to look at the effect on student performance? You know, survey responses from-
Survey responses from teachers say one thing, but they don't, they don't, the ultimate goal for all of us, and for, and certainly the primary among all of the focus goals is improved student performance. Now, that, I immediately, and Dr. Hayden, I'm sure is thinking along the same lines, how do you design that? Because that's going to be, to tease out that kind of inference from some data is, is going to be fairly sophisticated. But why don't we set that goal right now? Say, let's take, let's get some classes and do, and set up a pilot where we get some data, but not on how teachers feel about it, but on what effects it having on, on the performance measures that we're expected to be maximizing.
And that's why I referenced the board focus goals, because that's goal number one. And we didn't mean any offense to our great teachers that they weren't goal number one, that student achievement was. But that's part of that plan.
I just want to interject here. When, because the recommendation is that, under the, that the three-year contract would come back to us, and we would be determining, the board would be making a decision about whether to continue. And Mr. Zettel said that we could even make that decision mid-contract.
Yes.
So I'm, in, in the interest of time, and also because I'm not sure that the best decisions would be made sort of off the top of our heads right now, I would maybe like to suggest that we, we can, we can approve the contract and then still, and then develop, if we're inclined to approve the contract. We can approve the contract and then develop our own standards and measures, and we can direct staff to come back with a, a plan for how we're going to measure the success of this, rather than trying to come up with that plan right now.
Well, I was actually going to ask that and ask if there would be a plan that each principal could provide, you know, that we could then see in a board brief or something that would say, here's how, we've already heard two principals talk about how they foresee implementing it. And it's hard to know, you know, the percentage of teachers that would use it, how they would track it. So it would be nice to get something a little bit more fleshed out. I mean, I think this is great-
We could certainly do that.
-and I'm ready to support it tonight. I just think it would be nice to have a game plan.
We could certainly do that. And the points are very well taken. This has to have an effect on student achievement.
So maybe we can include the establishment of that plan in any motion that is made?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Unless there's further-
Ms. Rodriguez?
Well, I, you know, I certainly, I absolutely agree with you, Ms. Cordaro. The, you know, we can vote for the contract. This, in fact, that's what's agendaized. And I have no problem with that. I would certainly urge that, that we look at, that we ask the superintendent to ask Dr. Hayden to try to put together some kind of a pilot study that we could do. It doesn't have to be very large. And, and, you know, if, if the data look good, that's going to help persuade more teachers to adopt the program. So there's a real interaction effect there that I think we want to see go for us, rather than kind of leaving it untouched. Thank you very much.
Great. Ms. Rodriguez?
Move to approve.
Okay. Well, I was just about to do that. Would you like to do that?
I do, I always defer to you, Mrs. Rodriguez. Please.
Okay. Based on the discussion, I'd like to move approval of the contract for the Edgusoft software purchase with the condition that we get a report back in the near future regarding more specific detail of how the sites will implement the testing, how it will be monitored and evaluated for effectiveness, and perhaps the establishment of a pilot in a, in a couple of different classrooms, so that we could really more closely track the actual effect on student learning and achievement.
Without reservation, second that motion.
Okay. Motion clear?
Can I put a, should I put a timeframe on that? Can we get a report back by January?
No. That's too soon.
Can we get a report back by-
Oh, you mean, you mean the plan?
The plan for how we're going to implement it.
Yes, yes.
Not, not for implementation.
We want the proof.
How. I, I think if we put a timeframe on it, it will be more likely to get-
Good.
That leads to a question. When, if you, if we approve it today, when is it that the teachers actually have it in hand and training starts?
This month.
Okay.
Terrific. And when do, when do board members get the keys so they can play?
Okay, wait a minute. We're off the topic of our, of our motion. We've got a motion on the floor. Let's call the question first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries four, zero with one absence.
And was that moved, moved by Lynn Rodriguez and seconded by Bob Noel?
And seconded by Bob Noel. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
And you will all have passwords.
Thank you.
Do we have to take the test?
And publish the results. Okay. E2, second possible approval of revisions to board policy and administrative regulations, 5144.1, suspension and expulsion due process.
Well, we've discussed these issues on a number of meetings, and we've purposely held them until we could have appropriate public input. Michael Gonzalez will give this presentation.
Thank you very much. Just to remind you folks, we have, as Dr. Sarvas pointed out, have discussed the assignment on five different occasions. It was decided at the August 29th meeting that we would delay a vote on this matter to give the public an opportunity to provide input into the decision-making process. I want to share with you that attachment, E2, the revisions to the board policy and the administrative process regarding suspensions and expulsions due process, have language that very clearly provides written notification of the right for a parent, for a student to request before the board a supplemental hearing. I also want to share with you that language was added and deleted to these two, to the board policy and administrative regulation to bring them up to current, to bring them up current with the education code. I want to share with you that there was some discussion of whether it was appropriate to use stipulated agreements that include uninformed and a voluntary waiver in cases involving mandatory expulsion, where there is admission by the student and the student is not represented by counsel. Absent different direction from the board, the proposed language of the administrative regulations is unchanged. That was presented to you on August 29th. Staff believes, continues to believe that pupils and their parents should have the right to enter into a disposition if they wish without securing, without the additional expense of securing legal counsel to avoid the process of the expulsion hearing. I do want to share with you that there are two typographical areas in the board policy and ARs that I want to bring to your attention. Before I do that, I want to make sure that it is understood that as you read the underlined sections in the board policy and the administrative regulations, those are additions to the language of the board policy and to the administrative regulations. I would like to draw your attention-
I just want to ask you-
Please.
-clarify one thing. These are additions to what is currently in place, but these are not additions to the proposal, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. I would like to draw your attention to page one of 18 of the suspension, expulsion, due process administrative regulations. And again, it's noted as page one of 18. All right? I would like you to go down to the sixth paragraph. The paragraph that's underlined, that's a new addition to the administrative regulation. There is a typographical error. If you take a look at the fifth line, you're going to see, it starts with 48904 or 49815. That is a typographical error. It should read 48915. All right? One other, and I would like to review that complete sentence for you because it's relevant for the next typographical error that I'll point to you. The second sentence of that paragraph six that I'm referring to says, "A stipulated agreement can be entered into where there's no disagreement about the facts or law and where the offense is expendable under education code 48900."
Expellable.
Expellable, excuse me. 48902, 48903, 48904, and the correction I've just shared with you, 48915. All right. That sentence, if you, if you can just momentarily hang on to that sentence, I want to draw your attention to page 13 of 18 in the same administrative regulations. Under item E at the bottom of that page, where it says stipulated agreement alternative dash voluntary consent to discipline, I draw your attention to the third line. It says, it starts, "Where the offense carries the mandatory expulsion under education code 48915." I would wish that you would recall that sentence that I shared with you that is correct. And this should not read, "Where the offense carries the mandatory expulsion under education-" and this should not read, "Where the offense carries the mandatory expulsion under education code 48915." Instead, it should read, "Expellable under education code 48900, comma, 48900.2, comma, 48900.3, comma, 48900.4, and 48915."
So, delete which words and add which words?
We would be deleting, "Where the offense carries the mandatory expulsion under education code 48915."
Well, you're gonna leave education code, right?
Excuse me, you would leave education code, but you would delete 48915. Excuse me, you would add to that, 48915. Again, education code 48900, 48900.2, 48900.3, 48900.4, right before 48915.
So, we're not actually deleting anything?
No, we're actually expanding. And what that does, just, just to understand, what that does, that would permit the district and a student and a parent to enter into a stipulated agreement, not just for the mandatory expellable offenses, but any violations of 48900 and those subsections that are referred to.
Can I get, I'm maybe being too picky here, but can you clarify that again? You gave us that change on page one of 18, where the number that currently reads 49815 should now read 48, no, 48915. So, the numbers just got transposed.
Exactly.
Okay. I misunderstood that. Okay, so it should be 48915.
Right. And then that, that second addition simply is, what we're suggesting is that stipulated agreements could be entered, not just for the mandatory expellable offenses, but any violations of the 48900 and the section, subsections that follow.
Okay, then I have a question about that wording on page 13 of 18. Because it says, "Where the offense carries the mandatory expulsion."
Right.
So, are we changing that?
Exactly. Where the, it would read voluntary consent to discipline agreement for any expellable offense under education code 48900.
Okay.
Followed by 48900.2, et cetera, and would end at 48915. I'm sorry that I don't have an overhead with that correction, but I hope you can follow that, and the public.
Does the stipulated agreement, the way, basically, it's a, it's a confession. And does that include a waiver of right of appeal?
Yes, it does. Stipulated agreements, if a parent and a youngster sign it, would include a waiver for a right of appeal. That is correct.
Should it say that here? I, maybe it does, maybe I just didn't see it, but I.
I, I think as, as you go into the ARs very carefully, you'll see that that is the case. Just to follow up, the board did ask for input from the public, and I know that papers, position papers have been submitted by the Santa Barbara Tinn Legal Clinic. Another, another letter was sent to you folks late this afternoon. Any additional questions?
Do board members have additional questions on this?
Oh, go ahead.
I just had a quick question. Other districts are size. I think I may have asked this last time. I can't remember. Ventura or Oxnard, how do they do this? I, I remember at the School Board Association meeting, it was mostly small districts with one high school, and I realized they do it, they may have a different process because they are so small. And I realized that large districts do it differently because they're so large. What do, what do other medium-sized districts?
Yes. But just let me digress into history a bit. The stipulated, the concept of the district entering into stipulated agreements actually grew out of conversations with my counterpart with the Ventura Unified School District, where it's very commonplace to settle expulsion matters through stipulated, stipulated agreements, rather than to go through an administrative hearing. We checked with the Santa Maria Bonita District. They indicated that half of their cases go through stipulated agreement. We made contact with Oxnard, and they simply indicated that they do use stipulated agreements as well as the administrative hearing process. We made contact with the Conejo School District, and they told us much the same thing.
My question was actually, that's interesting, but it was also more broad, just in how they do the hearings, in whether they have the board actually participating in the hearing process.
No, they, they actually defer to the administrative hearing panel. The board does, by law, you're required to review the findings and recommendations, and that's how it's done. But again, in most of these districts I mentioned, they actually produce, they go through the process of a stipulated agreement that is sent to the board for their approval.
Well, the crucial question that came up before, and we have yet to hear anything about tonight, is will the board hear directly from the families?
Yeah, I wanted to just comment on that real quickly, too, because I think the stipulated agreement, we had originally, I think several of us had some concerns about that, but given that, at least my concerns have been allayed by the fact that these are only cases, the only cases that would get a stipulated agreement would be cases where no, the, the parents, the students are not disputing what happened. Everybody's in agreement that this is actually what occurred, and they all are, they're in agreement on what the penalty should be. Nobody has any, nobody's challenging anything in the case, and they just agree that this is what's supposed to go forward. So, I don't, I don't really have a problem with that anymore, because I understand that if anybody disagrees with any of it, then they don't do a stipulated agreement, and it goes through the whole process. I'm much more, and, and those are not the stu, those are not the cases that usually come to us at the board anyways. Because the cases that usually come before us at the board are cases where people aren't in disagreement, where they're saying, no, we are, my child didn't do this, or the child is saying, no, I didn't do this. Or they're saying, yes, they did, but we don't think this is the appropriate punishment. So, my concern has to do with what Dr. Noel just raised, which is the stipulated agreements don't seem to be addressing, although it's good. I mean, I think those are gonna streamline some things. They don't seem to be addressing the major concern that we have, which is that we have essentially been violating ed code by having these sort of informal meetings with parents. And in order to comply with ed code, it would take, it would be a much more involved process. So, how do we do something that's manageable and not eliminate parental and, and student's input to the board?
Thank you. I would like to direct your attention to page 14 of 18 of the administrative regulations. And we're looking at the section called F, Final Decision by the Board. And with your permission, I'll read very quickly, beginning with the second paragraph. "Where the expulsion is recommended by the administrative hearing panel, written notice shall be given to the pupil and parent guardian of the date on which the board will act on the expulsion recommendation. The notice shall advise the pupil and parent guardian of their right to request that the board conduct a supplemental hearing by delivering a written request to the Director of Compliance and Categorical Programs at least seven days prior to the sched, to the date scheduled for board action on the recommendation. Such written request must describe the reasons why a supplemental hearing is being requested and what additional information is sought to be presented." If I may continue, the next paragraph. "When a supplemental hearing is requested, the board will consider the request at the time which is scheduled for the board to take action in the expulsion recommendation, and will determine in its sole discretion rather, whether to grant or deny a supplemental hearing. A decision of the board to order a supplemental hearing may limit the scope and time of the hearing and condition the granting of the hearing upon the agreement of the pupil and parent slash guardian to waive any time requirements that may be applicable. In addition, in lieu of conducting the supplemental hearing itself, the board may order that the supplemental proceeding be conducted by the administrative hearing panel." One last paragraph, if you'll bear with it. "If the board accepts the recommendation calling for expulsion, acceptance shall be based upon a review of the findings of fact and recommendations submitted by the administrative panel, or upon the results of any supplemental hearing conducted pursuant to law that the board may order. A decision by the board to expel a pupil following a hearing shall be based upon substantial evidence relevant to the charges adduced at the hearing. Except as otherwise allowed by law, no evidence to expel shall be based solely on hearsay evidence." If I could summarize that, what this language indicates is that a parent or a student can request, can petition a supplemental hearing with the board. That petition would be presented in closed session. The board would determine if they're going to permit it or not. There was a concern from the community, well, what about appeal processes? I want to remind the public, as well as the board, that there is, the education code spells out an appeal process. If a youngster or parent believes that their due process violations have been violated, for example, that the school did not have the jurisdiction for the expellable offense, that the County Board of Education constitutes the appeal process. Okay? Thank you. Does that address the concern you raised?
That was your concern, right?
It does and it doesn't. I mean, it still provides that the only way that the parent, that the parents and, the families and the student can meet with the board is to have a supplemental hearing.
Is to request a supplemental.
Is to request a supplemental hearing.
And for the board to approve it.
And for the board to approve it. And that requires a whole, another, that all the parties be present, including the school and the administr, and the administrators.
A representative from the school, correct?
A representative from the school. So, it also seems, but I'm not sure that I'm, I may be interpreting it more strictly than it's intended, to limit why or how we could approve a supplemental hearing. Is that, is that your understanding, or do you think that we could basically do it for any reason we wanted?
That there is no current, within the guidelines provided, proposed for the board, there is no limits placed on your ability to judge, yes, we grant, or, or no, we deny the hearing. That would be a decision strictly made by the board.
Well, let me ask about that, because, just to make sure I understand correctly. Now, we don't make that decision. Is that correct?
Currently, we grant to a parent and a student the right to appear before the board in closed session or open session on the day that their recommendation and findings go to the board. That is correct.
Yeah. So, this, so the change would mean that, rather than, than it being automatic, that there would be a decision by the board whether it will make a decision?
Well, that, that is correct.
Conduct a hearing and make a decision.
That is correct, but the step that precedes that.
On the basis of what information will it make that decision?
On the basis of the petition that the parent fills out.
And on, and on the report of the hearing panel, right?
Right. Well, let me, let me step back. The, the, your decision-making about holding a supplemental hearing is going to be based primarily on the document, on the petition written by the parent and the student, outlining the reasons why they believe a supplemental hearing should be held.
We're not going to have the findings of fact from the hearing panel at that moment?
Yes, you'll have that document, too. And so, you'd be considering two documents in deciding if you're going to grant a supplemental hearing or not.
Okay, so this would be, I'm gonna ask, this is really a question of Mr. Price. This is like, we're deciding whether or not to hear oral arguments? Otherwise, we could decide it on the paper, or we could decide it by having a, a hearing from the parents?
It's not whether you will be hearing oral argument. It is rather whether you will be taking additional evidence, and that's very different.
Oh, yes.
That's what a hearing is, is distinguished from a legal argument. Now, just one further addition to what you said a minute ago. Under the education code, the board always has the right to order a supplemental hearing, whether or not a request by a parent is made. So, should the board, in its review of the panel's finding, determine that it has questions that it feels needs to be resolved, you may, on your own, order a supplemental hearing or send it back for the administrative panel to take further evidence in lieu of your conducting that proceeding yourselves. Now, in the drafting of this regulation, Mr. Gonzalez wanted there to be language added, which would notify the pupils and parents of the right to request a supplemental hearing, so that it would not only be on the board's initiative when one was determined to be appropriate, but rather, the parents, should they wish to, could make a request and specify, basically, what the reason was, so that there would be more information in those situations presented to the board. So, it's a two-way thing. You can do it on your own, and the parents are given notification that they have the right to ask for one.
So, the, what I, if I understand you correctly, then there's, there's a difference here than, than we had in some earlier discussions, where there was talk about the, the board's hearing being really like an appellate hearing, listening, taking the findings of fact from the administrative hearing panel, and then only deciding on the base of that. Here's, this supplemental hearing will, will take new evidence?
Well, that's gonna be based on what the board orders. Let, let me put it this way, maybe, maybe it gets broken down three ways. Presumably, in the normal review, which the board would undertake, where there is no parental or pupil request for a supplemental hearing, and where the board determines not to order a hearing, you, your task is to look at the record and determine whether the findings that are made support the action that's being recommended. If there is to be a supplemental hearing, a request could be made to make legal-only arguments. For example, a counsel could come in and say that they felt that there was a deprivation of due process without any need for taking new evidence. That would be more like an appeals, oral argument type of situation. And then, of course, the last example is where a pupil and parent might say that there was new evidence, for example, that had been discovered since the time of the administrative panel's decision, and, and ask for the board to consider that. Or, as is so often the case with the board's work, a request to hear from the family with respect to why some other disposition should be made besides expulsion.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. That, can I just, question? That addresses the question that I was asking Mr. Gonzalez earlier, which is, had to do with whether it was, we were going to be limiting why, how we would hear these cases. So, there, would there be a restriction, or it sounds like maybe there, there isn't as strict a restriction as I thought, in terms of how parents could, or on what grounds parents could request a supplemental hearing?
There is no limitation contained within the proposed language as to the reasons for a supplemental hearing.
Okay. I still worry that this process, this. I still worry that this process disadvantages parents with limited English proficiency or limited educational background, limited knowledge of the, just sort of the judicial or even just the educational process, and advantages those parents who have all of that. That's my concern.
I have a question about, I'm just trying to think how this will, will work. And there's timing issues here. So normally, we see the expulsion packet prior to a decision, so it comes the week that we get our board packet. So we would then be seeing it, because we have timeframes that we need to meet, statutory time for, education codes timeframes, so we would be given the administrative hearing panel's recommendations sooner than we were getting them before and then deliberating on whether or not to allow the supplemental hearing or to request a supplemental hearing if we wanted to initiate it. Do we have to do that a week or two before we normally would have seen the packet? Because there's a, there's a lag time and oftentimes the expulsions that we are acting upon, there's been this long period of time before we see it. So I'd be concerned about, first of all, about the timing. And then, secondly, we're talking about notification and giving parents, you know, seven days or whatever it was. But we often get, hear stories about it was addressed wrong, it went to the wrong house, it didn't get opened, or it got sent to the district and it wasn't opened by our staff. And not to point fingers at anybody, but there are human error factors here and seven days is pretty short if someone's on vacation or, you know, we've seen, unfortunately, mistakes have been made on the paperwork. So that's just further complicates it if you're putting the onus on them to get back within seven days and there's often confusion about what their options are. So I just feel like this, I mean, I like the idea of doing this, but when it comes down to the practicality of it, I mean, I have some procedural concerns in addition to what, I mean, I don't know how you would really be, be sure that you were communicating clearly to each and every parent, here's what your options are. You almost have to do it in person, you know, because I'm afraid that these certified letters, sometimes the families have different addresses. I mean, I think these are all issues that we're just going to have to come to grips with.
Your points are well taken. Please, please know that effective this year, we actually have a assistant principal assigned to expulsions two days a week. Part of his task is to do those things that you've described, to meet with the parent in person and make sure that the parent is very much aware of what the expulsion process entails, what the educational options are as the youngster is going through the expulsion process. And you're certainly correct that it will require that we minimize the errors that you folks have seen in the past, no doubt about it.
Is this a new practice, having this assistant principal doing this?
Yes.
So it's.
Effective this year.
New staffing level applied to this?
Correct.
Okay. I have other questions, but I know we have speakers. I just have one quick question. Mr. Gonzalez, what would be the, what would be the consequence of continuing to hear, to meet with parents and students as we have been?
Without the presence of the school officials, we are violating the education code.
And, and what would be the, I'm sorry, what would be the consequence of doing that?
You're, you're speaking to a compliance officer. My obligation to the superintendent and to the board is to make sure that we comply with the law.
I understand, and I don't want to advocate that we don't comply either. I'm just wondering what the consequences would be. So it's okay, I'll let you off the hook. We'll, we'll take our, our public input.
I wanted to ask another question. When, it doesn't matter if you'd rather.
Okay, yes, I, I think we'll hear from the, from the public and then we can, we'll probably have additional questions after, after that.
Will it be appropriate to ask questions of the representatives of the teen legal clinic that presented us with, I know we typically don't have back and forth with public speakers, but.
I think it probably would be, I'm sorry, I keep turning off my mic.
Because I have some questions that I'd like to ask.
Yeah, I think it probably would be because the issues that were raised, I think, are ones that we may want to clarify as well. So, yes.
We're, if, if we're going to hear from attorneys, I would, I would suggest and request that, that we not hold them to the three-minute rule so tightly because, not that attorneys can't say. Oh, I'm in trouble now. I'm married, I'm married to one, I'm going to catch it when I get home.
I have every faith that attorneys can be succinct.
No, my, my point, my point is simply that attorneys have so much to say that is worth hearing.
I think all of our community members have thing, have much to say that's worth hearing. So we're, with all due respect, we're going to hold our attorneys to the three minutes and however, if we have additional questions, we will not include that in their three minutes. Okay, so our first speaker will be.
Tara Hillenford from the Santa Barbara Teen Legal Clinic.
Good evening. On October 2nd, 2006, the Teen Legal Clinic delivered a five-page position paper in opposition to the proposed revision to the expulsion policy. It sounds like you all have received a copy of that. I'm going to speak first to the proposed revision stated today, October 10th. Would like to make four points. First, as stated in the position paper, the clinic wholeheartedly believes that each student should be given a chance to come before the board to speak to you with regard to pending expulsions. This board is the moral compass for these hearings. This board can go beyond the facts of the alleged incident and look at the full background of a student and the student's family. You are the checks and balances and here to act in the best interest of the student. Second, if the board adopts the proposed revision to allow a student to request supplemental hearing but has a discretion to reject the hearing, what is the acceptance or the rejection based upon? We've heard from Mr. Gonzalez that there is no limit and it's just, there's just discretion, but that seems to leave it a bit vague and ambiguous. If the board is going to leave it to the student to request a supplemental hearing, then I believe the board should he, hear each and every one of those requests. Third, it appears that the board is under the impression that if a supplemental hearing is granted, this hearing must include all parties and follow the requirements of the administrative panel hearing. However, the clinic has found no section within the California education code that requires such formality. This is not the plain language of the code, it is not laid out in the code, this is something that they have interpreted from the code. Fourth, with regard to stipulated agreements, this should not be instituted without the student having legal representation or an advocate. When a student signs a stipulated agreement, they're giving up their due process rights. They're potentially giving up a better resolution to their matter. How can a student and their parent's signature on a stipulated agreement be knowing and voluntary without an advocate? It can't. The memo written by Michael Gonzalez today indicates, quote, "Staff believes that pupils should have the right to enter into such a disposition without the expense of legal counsel to avoid the process of the hearing. There are free services through the clinic to students to assist them with just this type of matter." Furthermore, does the staff believe this is a good idea because it saves time? I'd like to you to look at the Santa Barbara News Press article from this morning where Michael Gonzalez states, "The proposal is being floated partly to reduce the amount of time the board spends on expulsions. We should not take away a student's due process rights to save time." The clinic makes four additional suggestions. One, in addition to notifying of the right to legal counsel, you should notify them that there's free assistance out there. Shouldn't each student be aware of their rights? Two, with regard to the administrative panel, let's put a community member on that panel, let's make it the most impartial panel we can. Three, if the board is going to approve expulsion recommendations based on the findings of the administrative panel, let the student also give some recommendations. And finally, these proposed, proposed revisions are not ready for a vote. The clinic would be happy to meet with the board and discuss further options, and let's not forget that we're here for the best interest of the student. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hillenford.
Did you have questions?
I, I think we'll, we'll probably hear from everyone first and then we may come back to some questions. Thank you.
John, sorry, Greer. Greer?
Madam President, board members, Dr. Sarvis and staff, my name is John Greer. I'm a local attorney interested and involved in delinquency prevention issues throughout the county. I sent a letter today to Mr. Gonzalez and I believe that was forwarded to, to the board and I really appreciate Mr. Gonzalez taking the time and effort as well as the lady in the office that was very congenial to fax me the agenda items last Friday when I called and couldn't find it on the, on the computer. Mr. Gonzalez responded to my first issue, which was to make sure that, that parents and students understand, and you might see in my letter, that their son or daughter could be expelled by this process. There is mention in, in the letter that Mr. Gonzalez sent to me today indicating that, that's there, but I would still encourage that that be bolded and made very clear to parents because I think that, that the real issue here is that things should be dealt with at the administrative hearing level. In my experience in representing young children before boards of education, appeals to the county board of education, is that we're not involved. The teen legal clinic's not involved, pro bono attorneys are not involved until it gets to the point where they now figure out that they're going to be expelled and they're coming before the board, that's why you have the hearings. But in saying that, if the article was correct that I read this morning, there's only apparently 50 expulsion hearings that this board heard last year, or 80, less than 100. Expul, is that, if, I don't know.
105.
105.
The ones that chose to come.
A relatively small number in, 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 you know, the overall student body that this board controls. And I think that it's important that, you know, it's easy sometimes for us to step aside when we're dealing with minorities and, and a minority population. And I think some of the board members, I think rightly, have zeroed in on the fact that this could, in fact, trample on people's rights that don't understand or in some of the cases that I represent it didn't get notice or there were errors made. And this brings me to my issue about the stipulated judgment or stipulated agreement. I find it hard to understand how a parent and a student are going to be stipulating away their rights when they're being advised by the exact people, the administration, to have them expelled. And I think that's, you know, a real problem for me. And I think if anywhere there's a need for legal counsel, it's if, if there's a stipulated agreement. And, and so I think, you know, those are my main issues. And I encourage this board not to box themselves into a corner where they're actually giving up their right and their obligation and putting that off or shunting that off to the Santa, you know, Santa Barbara County Education Board because all you're going to wind up doing is sending those appeals to that board. And I think this is the board that should be hearing those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Carolyn Renard.
I want to support the comments made by the previous speakers. I have specific comments on your proposed policies and regulations. The stipulated agreements offer no benefit to these families. They're giving up their due process rights for nothing except maybe a discontinuance of the disapproval if they don't do it by the administration of the school. The section on stipulated agreements should be in the policy, not buried back on page 13 of the administrative regulations, so parents are aware of them. Stipulated agreements must be uniform across all schools in the district. This means that a district-wide stipulated agreement form must be approved by the board, at least if the board wants to perform a responsible job with this policy. Despite my requests for this at earlier meetings and Mr. Gonzalez saying he would bring one back for the board to approve, this has not been done and once again, Mr. Gonzalez is asking the board to approve a stipulated agreement policy without this. In addition, there must be strict board oversight of these stipulated agreements. A well-written and very clear stipulated agreement form in English and Spanish would also go far to minimize the possibility of intimidation and of abuse of these. The policy on involuntary transfers should also be a separate policy in the policy section, not hidden on page eight of the administrative regulations without even its own heading. Involuntary transfers have nothing to do with the suspension and expulsion due process policy that it's in, regulation that it's in. It is neither a suspension nor an expulsion and there are no due process rights given. There is no mention of an appeal in the, in the information that is given in involuntary transfers. If parents have a right to appeal this, which I believe they do, this should be made clear. Involuntary transfers are basically a backdoor expulsion without any due process rights and without the board even being aware of them. I request that the use of involuntary transfers be suspended until an investigation is done into the use and purpose of these, quote, "transfers" and whether there is a good reason to even use them at all. In addition, Mr. Gonzalez was asked by the board last time they considered this topic to bring the statistics on involuntary transfers, but he has not done so. The section on supplemental hearings should be in the body of the suspension expulsion policy, not back on page 14 of the administrative regulations.
Thirty seconds.
The requirement that requests for supplemental hearings be in writing is discriminatory against people with disabilities and those with limited or no English. Statistically, these groups comprise by far the majority of the people affected by this policy. This must be remedied. The suspension and expulsion and supplemental hearings is not a term that any parent would understand what the meaning of is. You know, there needs to be a clear, it needs to be titled a request for an appeal of the administrative decision, the administrative panel's decision, not supplemental hearing, which is meaningless to parents.
Thank you, Ms. Renard. Okay, are there questions from the board?
There's one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have one more. Roseanne Crawford.
Am I there? There we go. Thank you. Hi, I am Roseanne Crawford, a candidate for Santa Barbara School Board. I am against removing this board's role in the preliminary process of student expulsion. Your role as board members is to set policy as well as be inclusive of the public in setting policy and working with programs. Mr. Gonzalez, with all due respect, from an administrator's point of view, I can understand how you want to streamline this process. In doing so, however, this board would distance itself from this preliminary process, out of sight, out of mind. Unless the family appeals, you lose touch with the volume of cases coming through. Key here is a lot of these non-conforming students probably would be intimidated by the appeals process to reach you. Staying on the pulse is important. By staying on the pulse, you gain more information. You need that information to reduce the expulsion rates, which is why we're here tonight trying to streamline things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Okay, are there questions from the board?
I, I, one thing that, again, goes back to an earlier discussion, we were led to believe that if we do have hearings that involve the parents, that the law required a rather elaborate set of, of procedures be followed. And I recall in, in that discussion, gosh, it's been a long time ago now, that I looked at it and it was like, I was reading at least a page or so of detailed stuff and some words leapt out that sounded like a real legal process and with due, with due process and protection to, to the student, and that was a horrendous thing. And so we, at least in my recollections, I backed away thinking, oh, that is just too much. But I don't hear that in this and I, I just need some guidance. What, what, what is that procedure going to be like if we, when we have those supplemental hearings?
Well, I'll go first if you want and then Mr. Gonzalez can follow up. But I think that the first speaker, Tara? I think her comment was correct to the effect that there is no specific requirement in the education code that mandates there, that there be a representative from administration present. I believe that the earlier discussions with the board focused instead on the fact that, that there were structural problems as viewed by administration. or her family, and perhaps counsel, coming into the board and presenting whatever is going to be presented, without having there be anyone to counter or correct any misstatements or give the other side of the case. I believe it was that notion that was involved in terms of a desire to have administration present during any supplemental hearing. The board can order a supplemental hearing on terms such as it wants, and can invite the family into, meet with the board on similar terms as you have all the way along. It's the board's decision as to whether or not you want to recognize an administrative concern that there ought to be two sides that are present at any time, but you have that discretion. In terms of other elements of your question, there's a requirement that supplemental hearings be recorded in some form, and under present conditions, the board is recording its closed sessions, so that's not an additional requirement that's different from what would be the case otherwise. And there's just a need to make sure, along the lines, I think, that Mrs. Gonzalez was stating that time consideration, uh, Mrs. Gonzalez, there I go. Mr. Craig, I got your back, Lynn, I'm sorry. To make sure that the time requirements that are set forth in the ed code are complied with. But in terms of whether there are any onerous requirements, such as you described, my answer would be no.
So, so do I understand now, earlier, earlier I heard a statement that the way we do it now, we're breaking the law. And, and now I hear the statement that we are not breaking the law. And that does matter to me, and I know it does to my colleagues. Which one is it?
I'm not aware of your breaking the law in the manner that you do it now, if you are meeting all of the statutory requirements in the education code. But because I am not involved in this process on a day-to-day basis, I think Mr. Gonzalez might have a, a better say on that point than I do. Currently, and there's just one other twist, once there is a recommendation that is made by the administrative panel, then it goes to the board, and you are to review the findings and recommendations, and can order a supplemental hearing if you wish. Is that consistent with your present administrative regulation? I think there may be some question as to that, because in your administrative regulation, it currently says words to the effect that every pupil and the parents have a right to come before the board, to meet with the board. Now, does that translate into it's a supplemental hearing? It's fuzzy, and if there were to be a decision by your board where you wanted to see everybody in every single case, then I would suggest that the language of the administrative regulation be better tailored to dovetail with what's prescribed in the ed code.
Can we ask Mr. Gonzalez to address the issue of what, of how we are, or how you perceive that we are out of compliance with our current practice?
Thank you. And thank you for your comments, Mr. Price. Please recall that the consultants to the expulsion process are actually the firm of Lieberd Cassidy. And you may know that Michael Blatcher is the attorney that represents the, the district in these matters, does not represent the board, as we've pointed out. It was Michael, it was Mr. Blatcher's study that first led us on this path, where he very clearly pointed out in memos that date back to January 10th, where he indicated that it was his opinion that the current process of permitting parents to come before the board in closed session without representatives from the school present to dispute, to counter the evidence that was, or testimony was presented, violated the education code. And that's where this whole journey began.
Well, we, we certainly need to pin down that, that issue. Now, we have distinguished attorneys, both from the audience and from staff, and from Lieberd Cassidy, saying things that are not entirely consistent, and I would, where do you go when you can't get agreement among attorneys, you know, without going to court? But I, I think, I personally would certainly like to get some clarification on that point.
To the cash register, Dr. Noel.
Well, I think that we may need to have Mr. Blatcher weigh in on this again for us.
May I share with you that we will get a representative from the firm of Lieberd and Cassidy, but I think, as Mr. Blatcher's pointed out, there would be a conflict of interest for Michael to appear, since he represents the district in expulsion hearings.
Okay.
But yes, we can accommodate that request, of course.
Okay. Yes, and, well, before we move on, I just want to point out for members of the public who are here, and members of the public who may view this at a later date, because I think there may be a slight misperception that Mr. Gonzalez started this process on his own. We actually, as the board, we actually did ask Mr. Gonzalez to look at ways to streamline this process, because it is quite an onerous task for the board in terms of hearing all the, the expulsion cases. It was causing us several meetings to be late to our public session, because our closed sessions were going so long with the hearings from the families and the students. And we were, we requested that we look at ways to maybe help that process be a little bit more efficient. So I don't want to give the impression that Mr. Gonzalez took this in on his own and just wanted to, to, you know, make things smoother for himself. It was really a request from the board. Now, we are looking at how to, how to reconcile our desire to make things move a little more smoothly with our, our desire to give parents and students their due process. So, I just want to clarify that.
I have a number of comments, and I'm not sure I have a question anymore, because we've kind of talked about a lot of these things, but first of all, I'd say thank you for your written comments, because I think it has helped us to put some of these things in a, in a slightly different perspective. And we have been talking about this for a long time now, and there's been a lot of discussions in different ways. I mean, we've looked at, come at this from different angles, and we've had Mr. Blatcher's memo, and the things have been spelled out for us in terms of our options. I'd like to say that as a board member, the student discipline expulsion process can be one of the most heart-wrenching and most difficult, and that's, I think, something that everybody can appreciate. You're not in the closed sessions with us usually, unless you're there representing someone. It's, it's very, very difficult, and what I have found, maybe a little bit counter to the discussion, is that it feels to me, as a board member, a little bit one-sided, because we get families coming in, the ones who find out about the, the option to do that, not everybody takes advantage of that. But we get all sorts of different stories from the families. Some of them are, are exactly as you said here. It's like every kid, every child is different, everybody's circumstances are different. We have exercised our discretion and made decisions that were not what the administrative panel recommended. And then we get families who just don't want, their child doesn't want to take responsibility for what they did. And what we have to weigh, as board members, is not just the individual student and their family, but particularly the student. And you make a comment in your letter that the student themselves must be the number one priority, and of course, we're always out looking out for the interest of that student. But we also have to consider the interests of all the other students in the school affected by the action that was taken by that student. And the word gets around very, very quickly in the school community that, you know, if, if someone is found in some sort of situation to have violated the ed code, and either drug offenses, or knives, or whatever, and if we are particularly lenient in one case, and maybe not in other cases, that word gets around. There's parents that come in, I think, expecting that they can sway our decision with, with a sob story. And, and so we have to sort of try to stay, it, it's like having the wisdom of Job, and it's one of the hardest things that we do, because we're dealing with students' lives, the students in front of us, and the other students at the school. And we have to weigh what message we send back to the school campus when we say, oh, well, that family gave a really compelling argument, we're not going to go to the full measure that we have available to us, but this other child didn't show up, and we'll just go ahead and go with the administrative panel recommendation. So it's very uneven. And I have been frustrated with that whole aspect of this since I started on the board four years ago. So I've been wanting to see us fix it, not necessarily to stop seeing students and their families, that's not the only answer, but I have found the paperwork frustrating, there's often inconsistencies, and, and the information that we get has varied over the years since I've been on the board, and I've had frustration with that. So I think, I would like to see us fix it. I think the system right now isn't perfect. I think, I mean, I agree with a lot of what you're saying. I, I'm concerned about how we're going to make this work, you know, as far as the procedural issues, because it's a lot more time-consuming, I think, to make sure everybody knows. But I, but I still feel the weight of protecting everybody, and finding a way to do that that's fair, and thorough, and gives due consideration, making sure that the students' rights aren't violated. I think what we're trying to do is very difficult, and having, have this discussion now for how many months, and probably almost a year, I don't feel like we're necessarily any closer to making, I mean, I think, I would like to move forward with something, but I'm frustrated. And I, we're still getting a lot of, of concern out there from the public, so I'm not sure what I'm saying.
Well, you're sure saying it well.
I, I would like to see us fix this, and maybe we do need a little bit more time to sit down and work some of these issues through, because we haven't really sat at the table with you, and, and with other advocates, and said, what, how can we do this right? But the current process isn't working. It's not fair, it's, it's out of balance, and I don't want to see the district move forward with that current practice anymore. And I hate to see us throw out all this work and effort and discussion that we've had, because it's not fair, because the current system isn't fair either. So I, just trying to figure out how we can do this, and having discussions every two weeks or every three months doesn't seem to be getting us there. So I'm looking for somebody else to have wisdom to fix, figure this out.
Well, we, we have, we have spent a lot of time on it, and I, I have gotten some questions from people in the community, say, why are you spending so much time on this? There are so few people involved. And I, and I think about that, and I listen to this discourse, and then, and my, the pretty insightful comments of my colleagues. I think, I guess we're spending a lot of time on it, because there's nothing, it, it involves nothing less than the quality of justice. And, and, and that is something, you know, that is something that is not, it's not aggregate data, it is not what we do in social research, it's totally, totally idiosyncratic, it has to do with individuals. And, and somehow making the law work in a way that is sensitive to, to the human condition that we deal with, and yet is still consistent with the principles that a public agency has to live by, as Mrs. Rodriguez says, in administering programs for thousands of, of kids. And so, so the credibility of the rules is always at stake in every discrete decision. And that, that's part of the, of the, of the bind that we feel, that, the tear, that we're torn between what is, what is sometimes seems like the right thing to do, may not be the optimal thing to do in terms of, of policy for all of the students. So, so I, I, I don't think, to those who, who say we may be spending too much time on this, I would say, I don't think we have any choice. The quality of justice is, is the issue. Now, on, let me just say, I, I am not sure where I stand on how to conduct the hearings. I, I'm, I hear the argument that, that the jargon, supplemental hearing, is probably not clear to, to everybody. I hate, I sometimes get images of kind of, of a Kafka kind of scene of, you know, the little individual against this big institution, highly legitimized social institution, saying, "You." Now, sign, and then I come to my point. "You, we're offering you the chance to sign a stipulated agreement and waive your rights." About that, I feel very strongly. I mean, I can never vote for a procedure that would ask students to waive their right of appeal, without them, without feeling absolutely sure that they have had the benefit of understanding what that means. And, and I know that sounds a little strong and grandiose for the level of things that we're talking about. A, a kid got into trouble. But I don't see any way, that's just a central legal and, and, and a philosophic issue for me. You don't waive rights without knowing what you're doing, and that requires some access to, to legal expertise. And I don't have a solution to how you do that, but I, but that's bedrock for me.
Well, I want to figure out how, where we go from here. How do we move forward? How do we not just spin our wheels? I mean, I think both Dr. Noel and Ms. Rodriguez have raised some important issues about due process, and, and also about our duty to the, to the thousands of students that are in the district that are not coming before us. I also want to sort of remind us that when we talk, and not just us on the board, but sort of all of us as a community, that when we talk about expelling the students, we're, part of the reason that it is often such a difficult decision and such a difficult process for us, is because we are always, but we, usually people perceive it as, you know, that the students are leaving our district, and that's what we're dealing with. But we are always hopeful that the students will be returning to our district, that once they meet the, the requirements of the suspension or the expulsion, that they will return. And so, part of our decision is also based on what we think is going to produce the, it's going to be most likely to produce academic success for that individual student as well down the road. And that is one of the other things, that requires a tremendous amount of, of judgment and insight, and just sort of, you know, difficult decision-making. So, I think all of us can agree that this is a tough process. What I would like, what I would like to suggest is, you know, how we move forward. I'm wondering, because I, for me, with all due respect, the, the stipulated agreements are, to me, don't seem like, are not a big concern for me, or a big issue for me, because we don't have that many of them, they're not the ones that students, that, that create concerns. The ones that create concerns are where the students and the parents don't agree with what the district is recommending. And those wouldn't be stipulated agreements. So, I'm concerned with, perhaps, we could agree to try something, you know, for a semester, and evaluate it, or you do ongoing evaluation as it's, as it's, as we have it in place, so that we can determine whether we want to adopt it as a more permanent policy and, and regulation. And my, my request, or my option, I guess, would be that, given that what we are, it won't, it won't address the streamlining, I mean, we're still going to have to deal with all these issues that are just tough. I mean, we're just, they're just hard to make, hard decisions to make. But if we could, perhaps, have an administrator from the hearing panel in our closed session when we hear the student expulsion cases, so that the other side is being represented, and if students are, and families are misrepresenting what occurred at the, at the panel, or have a different version of the facts than what the, the hearing panel believes to be true, that we would have the benefit of hearing both sides. And if we could try that for a semester, determine whether it is, in fact, workable, or whether it bogs down the process even more, that that might address at least the issue of fairness. Doesn't address any of the other issues of, of efficiency, or, or any of that, but it might at least address the issue of fairness. What do other board members feel about that?
You mean in lieu of doing anything else different? You mean, in lieu of doing anything else different? So, if a student's family requests to come to the board in closed session as they do now, the only difference would be that we would have an administrator present?
Right. It, it appears to me that the thing that we're concerned about with our current practice in it, well, aside from the issues of, of efficiency, the, the procedural issues that we're concerned with are whether both sides are being represented.
I think there's also an issue of parents come because they think they're supposed to come. And we often have families that show up and they agree with the recommendations and they thank us for hearing them, but they don't basically have anything new to add and they're just there to get clarification. And so, and not to say that wastes our time, because it's great to meet with families, but, you know, sometimes they're confused. So, I think if we're going to do that, it would also be nice to clarify the procedure so that people understand, you don't have to come to the board unless you want to come to the board. It's not required.
And I think Mr. Greer's comment about making the, the hearing panel, the, or I guess, the hearing, more meaningful to the families by clearly identifying that at this hearing, that this hearing may result in recommendation that the student be expelled from, from school and making that, I agree with you, putting it in, in capital letters, bold print, making it very, very clear, that that might also help the parents to resolve some of this discussion or disagreement at the hearing level before it gets to the board level.
One, one thought, Mrs. Cordero, I have, I, I guess I'm not comfortable with the idea that it would be an, if, if an administrator, I haven't thought it through very carefully, but one reaction is if it's, if an administrator is present, it, it certainly in my mind should not be an administrator who was involved in the incident from the beginning, the principal of the campus, for example.
No, no, no. I suggested someone from the hearing panel.
Yeah.
An administrator from the hearing panel. So, that they were the ones who, who heard the original case and can present that information.
Now, we have, we have one person now who's, do we not, Dr. Saris, who was, isn't Mr. Couch hearing all of them now?
Yes, he did.
I, I have a lot of confidence in, in Mr. Couch as a fair and just man. And, you know, his presence would be something I would certainly take into account.
The other thing Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned, didn't mention was that it's almost about half the people say they're going to come to a, to speak with us and about, I mean, about half of them don't show up. And we just sit there. So, if there was some way to ask people, you know, for them to make the request rather than, here's your time, please come, and then they don't show up, somehow to intervene in that process. So, we do actually have time scheduled for people who want to come. That might help streamline. I, I just want to go back a little bit and just say that the hardest, one hard part, I think, for families is how long the process takes. That it's a long time before, between the expulsion and our hearing, and between, and then the hearing and then us, the appeal and the actual expulsion. And what happens is a student is out of school that whole time. And that's a long time to be out of school. I mean, we have, we have someone go to their house and so forth. They have independent study oftentimes. But it's not the same as being in a program. And these are students who often need, they, they don't need a time when they're just sitting around doing nothing, you know, almost nothing. They need time to be intensely in school. And we need to somehow make that process faster, not slower. And I think the advantage in some ways of the stipulated agreement is that it does kind of make it all happen very fast. And I, I guess I agree also that, that somehow people need to be offered free legal assistance before they do sign it. I'd love to see that, if, if there was some way to do that. But this, it just, it works so well for some people to sign the stipulated agreement, start the program that they're going to go into and be done with it much sooner. They're, they could be done several months sooner and back into our school system, which is a huge advantage. But I don't know, I don't want to add extra layers and have, you know, make it take even longer. I'd rather somehow we, I think streamlining is not just streamlining it for us and, and our time saved, but streamlining it for the students and having it happen faster.
Can, can I make a suggestion? Because we're having this discussion, we keep having this discussion in these meetings and it's frustrating because we can't sit and have, you know, a lot of, would it be possible for us to have, to hold a meeting and invite Mr. Couch and perhaps a couple of principals and folks from Teen Legal Clinic and other, you know, legal folks that might want to come, maybe some parents, and just sit down and have this discussion where we can talk about all the issues sort of together? Because there's the board's perspective, which you heard some of us articulate today, which is, we're weighing, serving all students and not, I think the hardest thing for principals is when we do not uphold their recommendation and somehow a student is very rarely let back to that campus, but to another campus. And then they're thinking, okay, well, there goes my ability to provide safety to my campus because then the student that, just say, brought a knife to school and then, well, they're just transferred to this other school. That sends a horrible message to the rest of the kids on the campus. So, that's a concern. Maybe that's not the norm, it isn't the norm, but I think if we could have this discussion where, and a board member should be present in that discussion, or two, I would like to have that.
I'm sorry. I just, that, that really goes to Mrs. Renard's point about the involuntary transfers. I've, I've never given much thought to that, but if that's being used as a way to move kids around without, without any process and, and as a, a kind of punitive thing, that would be, I don't know whether that's a fact or not, but, but if it is, that, that should be brought into this, this discussion, it seemed to me.
Okay. So, I just want to try to encapsulate what we're, what we're talking about here. I've, I'm fairly certain I'm reading us correctly, that we are not ready to make any decision on this policy now. That we don't, that we're not ready to vote on this. Is that accurate? Okay. So, given that, given where we are with that, then the recommendation that we have a more inclusive meeting, or, I don't mean to suggest that our previous discussions have been exclusive, but that we have some kind of a meeting that can involve other people and give us a little bit more latitude to have discussion is probably one that we would all like to pursue. Is that correct? Are we all in agreement to pursue that? Yes? Yes? Is that, yeah? Okay.
Are you in agreement with that?
I'm, I was back, I'm still stuck on the stipulated agreement.
Okay. We're, I'm asking if we're, if-
No, no, I, but I was about to say, you're saying, well, we're all in agreement that we're not, that we don't need to act. I'm thinking, am I going to make a motion to strike the stipulated agreement part of this? I, I guess I defer to your position.
Okay. So, now, are we in agreement that we are, that we want to have a, a future meeting that includes the, the other parties so that we can have fuller discussion?
A special meeting, like a task force away from a board meet, you know?
Right.
And with Mr. Gonzalez and-
Do you mean an ad hoc committee, including a couple of board members, or do you mean a board workshop?
I'm suggesting a, a meeting. It doesn't have to be a committee, but-
Yeah, I don't think we want to have a, I don't think we're suggesting creating a meeting.
Well, is it two board members or three or more?
Two or one.
Okay.
I would say.
Well, that's-
I'm not su, uh, why, why, why not have a quorum?
Well, then it's a regular, then it's a board meeting.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. We can have a workshop.
Well, okay. Where we don't have, where we, we suspend our normal procedures of three-minute limits and we can actually have dialogue.
Well, we just have a discussion.
I'm thinking, sit around the table and talk.
Yeah, I agree. Can we, we can do that with a, we can do that with a quorum as long as we notice it, correctly? Correct? Am I correct?
Certainly, certainly.
Okay. Mr. Price? And we'll have to, we can take public comment. And then we can just have a discussion? Is there a way to do that, where we just have a discussion, or does it have to be some sort of a workshop format?
Well, I think you are describing a workshop.
Okay.
It's a Brown Act Notice meeting. All the board members presumably would attend and you can adjust the rules like you do with any workshop to allow participation in the way you see fit.
Okay. Does anybody object to that?
And do it during the day, maybe, or late, five o'clock, as opposed to-
Well, I, I would, I would hope that, that it does have the flexibility that we'll hear a lot from the legal community.
Yeah, I think we can-
As we've heard the sampling tonight.
We can engage in discuss, we can make the format a discussion format.
Yeah.
Okay?
But like a working discussion where we might get some resolution, not just more of what we've been doing, I think.
Sure.
We want to sit down and actually say, okay, what can we live with? How can we make this work?
Well, are we going to vote from this? Then it's not really, that-
I would say we wouldn't take a vote that, that day.
I'm looking at Mr. Price about that.
I wouldn't think that you would be taking anything that would approach final action, but I think that it can certainly be noticed in such a way that would indicate that the board may be indicating its consensus on various aspects of procedures that would then give guidance to your staff to go back and bring forth.
Um, Mr. Price, would we, could we at that meeting give, give staff direction?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
For example, point one, do you want to have stipulated agreements? If so, do you want to include language that would restrict them only to situations where legal counsel is involved?
Okay.
So, it can be placed on the agenda in such a way that you can indicate your, your preferences and, and obviously, that's going to require that staff go back and put something together that builds on what you have expressed during the workshop. So, that's not a problem.
So, recommendations from staff could come from that meeting?
Or recommendations-
To staff.
Well, no, I mean, we could give directions to staff and then the staff could bring back recommendations to us from, based on information from that meeting.
Yes, because it wouldn't be possible for staff to present anything meaningful beforehand until they've heard what it is that you want.
Right. Okay. So, then, do we have a time when we want to do that?
Why don't I ask Julie to query the board members as to what two-hour period would be, daytime period would be appropriate for workshop and expulsion procedures and, and note that Mr. Gonzalez would need to have a, he would need to be there.
Okay.
Mr. Zettel would need to be there, probably our high school principal should be there, and we need to have a representative from Libra Cassidy there.
And members from teen court?
Certainly.
Yeah. So, we'll try to get a time that would be appropriate for everybody.
Mr. Gonzalez, is this a problem in terms of what we will do with expulsions right now?
No, it's not a problem. In lieu of taking any action, we stay with the status quo.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. I think that brings an end to this-
I just wanted to say that I feel that we're, we're all stuck inside the box on this.
We may be.
And it should be nice if, if somebody had some out-of-the-box ideas. It's kind of like if you're stuck within one framework, then you have to broaden the framework. May, you know, it'd be nice if somebody with a lot of experience could tell us how it's, not just how it's done elsewhere, but where are they doing it in a really different way?
Well, the-
Okay.
I want to thank everyone, the staff and the public and the board for their, I mean, this has been a long process. It's probably one of the hardest things we've grappled with since I've been on the board. So, thank you for all the, I know you've been trying to bring, keep bringing this back to us, so.
Is it, is it possible, Mr. Gonzalez, to, to get a copy of Ventura Oxnard's regs, to see what they do exactly and how they, how they talk about it?
It's very possible. They're available on the websites and we do have all the documents related to the process Ventura Unified uses, so yes.
That'd be great.
Try Poway, will you? They always seem to be out in front, aren't they, as a district?
Okay.
Take a look at what they do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and thank you to the members of the public-
Stage to this late hour to, um, address this, this topic. I want to point out that, yeah, I want to point out that it is about 10 minutes to 11. We are, I don't know, maybe two hours behind our agenda. So, this, this is an extremely important topic and I think it was appropriate that we spend time on it. However, it does mean that we don't have time to spend on some other topics. So, we're going to need to look at our agenda and look at how we might revise it.
Let me give you a quick review of the remaining agenda items and you can go back to them. For item E3, we do have people here tonight who can, to speak to E3. F1, we do have people here tonight to give the report on F1. F2, we could easily move Mr. Gonzalez. Okay, good. F3, I know we wanted to discuss this, we postponed it twice. F4, we could move as well. F5 is an item that should be taken care of tonight.
Okay. So- I'm sorry. So, that gives us one, two, three, four additional items.
Well, we could go back to each of those and ask if the people who are here to speak to those items would be willing to come back to a future board meeting.
No, 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 no. They've stayed here until 11 o'clock at night and we're going to-
Well, some of them are going to be presenting at 12 midnight.
Okay. Let, we're looking at item E3. So, okay, so if we're looking at four items that we still have left on the agenda, with 15 minutes each, that's going to give us another hour. So, we are going to be going to, we're going to have people here till midnight. What, what we have done in the past is taken the public comment so that the people who are here tonight wanting to speak on this item get a chance to make their comments and we hear that, and then we take the item up for discussion at a later date. Do board members have any questions or concerns about doing that? I agree that having people stay here until 11, we, we really should hear them, but maybe they don't need to hear us. At least not tonight.
There's that and there's the tiredness factor on our part in are we giving our best attention-
Exactly.
At this late hour. So, I think we-
Okay. So, I think items, item E5, how, I'm sorry, F5, however, we do need to make a decision on, I think.
I have an indication that for F1, Child Development would be willing to come back to do that presentation at a future meeting.
Okay. So, we can pull F1. We are, we can, yes. We love you and admire you greatly.
Can we promise, can we promise that we'll probably be at our best?
Okay. Well, thank you so much and we apologize for keeping you here so late.
We'll promise to put you on at a reasonable hour and, oh.
We just didn't get it.
Oh, great.
Okay. So, item E3, do we have speakers here to speak to item E3, Second Reading and Adoption of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation, 6142.8, Comprehensive Health Education as Part of the New District Wellness Policy?
Actually, we're here just to support Jan.
Oh, okay. So, do we, do, do board members have lots of questions on this? Is this something that we think is going to take a while, that we should maybe postpone and come back to?
I was ready to adopt it.
I was ready to adopt it tonight, too, but I-
I have lots of time.
You have lots of questions? Okay. Well, if we have a lot of questions on this, given the time, I think we probably should postpone it. Is that going to be a problem with you, with the timing? Okay. Okay. So, we're going to, we will postpone E3. That brings us to, I'm sorry.
You, you did that. You did that.
Are you sure they want, do they want to?
They're, said they were just here to, to, yes.
And to watch the adoption.
And to watch the adoption.
You mean, make sure it gets adopted?
But you don't want to-
You don't want to come back another time, do you?
Well, we feel like each of you is willing to-
Okay, well-
We do the-
Something that we're supposed to have gotten from back a while ago.
Okay. Let's take it now. We'll give it, let's say we'll give it-
Five minutes, Jan.
Ten, ten. We'll give it 10 minutes and if we are not at a, at a wrap-up point at that, at that time, we'll postpone it to our next agenda.
Well, we have had this on a previous agenda. I don't think the presentation will take all that long, but I do think we should address any concerns or questions. And Mr. Zettel will be making this presentation on the Second Reading and Adoption of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation-
Very brief presentation.
6142.8, Comprehensive Health Education as Part of the New District Wellness Policy.
As part of your policy currently, you have-
As part of your policy currently, you have, as part of the graduation requirement for high school, five units of health education. This policy doesn't stray from that. The policy does ask that we be aligned with state curriculum frameworks. And in the state curriculum frameworks lie the devil of what your decisions will be, I suppose. My recommendation to you is that we place 7th grade and 9th grade health one semester on the '07-'08 school year master schedules for our junior and senior highs. Currently, we have a range of issues at the junior high level and that's where our problems lie. Two of our junior highs have health on a wheel, a trimester wheel. Two of our junior highs do not have health classes. They teach the units of health in science and/or PE. Our senior highs currently offer enough health courses to cover your graduation requirement. The Wellness Committee also is recommending that health become a separate department and hence the fiscal impact for stipends and a member of the Curriculum Council. There are a number of pieces in the administrative regulations which have been laid out as, as recommendations that were part of CSBA, part of federal recommendations for health education, part of framework recommendations for health education that I put before you also. I would say that the policy of the board is, is critical, the ARs. We can deal with anytime. We can make those changes, but the, the board policy is the critical issue. And I think at that, I'm going to open for your questions.
Ms. Malikoff?
Yeah, my kind of view. Um, in junior high, I, as you said, there's different ways this is happening right now. But I guess I object to the idea of reducing arts and tech and, as our students, how many times do we hear about that woodshop program and so forth? That it will reduce those from a third of the year to a quarter of the year.
It could, or it could eliminate them.
And I think that would be just horrible. And I just, I, I think a third of the year is appropriate amount of time for the health class. That seems to me appropriate. I have, in the high school, my issue is, I have a 9th grader. I see what these kids are taking and I don't know too many 9th graders taking health because there's nothing on the other side, except for, for driver's ed. So if they take in 9th grade, if they take driver's ed, which is very early for driver's ed, but I do know a couple of 9th graders who are doing that. But otherwise, there's just nothing there. And it just doesn't work in the schedule, at least at DP. I don't, and I think they're doing it more at San Marcos. I think that's working out better.
I believe that's a true statement. Some of the recommendations that I've heard from Santa Barbara and from DP are to back it with a geography class or a class similar to the San Marcos Life Skills, which could be Avid Study Skills or a similar type semester course for 9th graders. We have no requirement for history, social science at the 9th grade level and therefore the health and whatever backs it could be within that history, social science realm.
Is there a City College class that can substitute for health?
There is one currently, a dual enrollment course that offered at Santa Barbara High School.
There isn't one at.
The other two, no.
No, no, not even at the campus, but at City College itself.
Yes, there is.
And what class would that be?
Health.
It's called health. And what department is help?
I, you know, I really, I really don't know that.
I've never seen.
But I know that we've borrowed from their curriculum to develop ours.
See, because that could be a, you could have a back-to-back in high school with another City College class. And so it becomes a, something for college-bound students who are interested in, how do you put that? Five, the five-point credit class, a, you know, getting the higher.
Right, enhanced grade point.
Yes. That that might interest them.
Yes. And that actually is being done through Santa Barbara High, but you can see across the district, we don't have any kind of a standard health offering. In, in K6, we also don't have framework recommended health instruction.
But I just want to.
And so we're, we're looking at, if you're looking at adopting this policy as written, you're adopting the state framework for health. So I want to be real clear about that, that that's what.
Which means what?
That's what we're saying that we would like district schools to follow.
Which means, I'm not sure what that means then, that they're, that, a particular curriculum?
Not a particular curriculum, except as it, as the State Board of Ed, K8 adopts health materials and health textbooks, which they have. But, oh, boy. Not a set curriculum, but a framework for teaching health. Recommendations around health instruction and the, and the units of study that should be taught in health are contained in this California State Framework for Health.
Should we see those, that framework? Is that something that we should take a look at? Is there something in there? I mean, do we, I assume it's very different from what we're teaching or it's somewhat different from what we teach now?
We don't come close to those recommendations right now.
So I guess I'd like to see what it was that we're teaching, what we, we are teaching in 7th grade and 9th grade and what we.
If, if you look also at ed code, ed code's very specific about the units that should be taught within a health class. And the California frameworks actually, you know, really further delineate those, those pieces and how those pieces should be spiraled throughout the K12 health curriculum. And what, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go, go.
What I'm recommending is, is really only specific to 7th and 9th grade and only really at the 9th grade level, which is what your graduation requirement is. That, that's currently what we have, is a single semester course required.
Can this class, this framework, can it be taught in a third of a year as opposed to a half a year in 7th grade?
If you talk really fast, no, I. It's a, it's a difference of covering or going into depth with instruction. Do you cover an inch thick and a mile long or do you cover in-depth?
I guess I'd want to see what those were before I.
Okay.
substituted art for it or tech or, what's the other, what's the other parts of that wheel? There's typing, there's.
Well, there's a number of electives that we offer.
Language, no, language doesn't come under that.
Language would be an elective.
But that's a separate, that's not part of the wheel?
Not part of the wheel, no.
No.
Okay, so is it the preference of the board to have this come back to us? Yeah, I mean.
Because I can make a motion.
I want to understand the implication for electives in junior high school again. Would you?
Okay.
Run that by me again, Mr. Zettel?
The principals are telling me that they have nowhere else to turn. If they were going to add a semester of health into their course without additional expense, and that additional expense would be probably enough health teachers that would go into a 7th period or within the day. Now, we do give them three additional FTEs at each of the junior high schools for electives. So they have a very full, what I feel is a pretty good elective program. But what, what it would mean is that something would have to give. Something on the wheel would have to give. So you may have a semester of health and then a quarter of each of the other two electives that were in the wheel, industrial tech or art or music would, would be shortened down to a possible quarter. Or, as I indicated, you may drop one of those electives that were not as popular and that were not being populated in the classes. And just let one go if you required a health class.
Well, it's, you know.
Okay.
That's, that's basically it.
One of the consequences of eliminating the 7th period day was to eliminate a lot of elective choice. And what I'm hearing from parents is that if, if my, if my child takes foreign language, which many of the parents who hope to have their kids into top universities have them do, that they have no electives unless they do zero periods or, or after school.
Okay, I'm going to interject here. We have exceeded our 10-minute of discussion on this item. It seems like we're not probably ready to vote on it at this point. That we may have further questions or concerns to, to raise. So I'm going to suggest that we forward our concerns, any questions that we might have or any additional information that we might need to Mr. Zettel and that we bring this back at our, on our next agenda.
Oh, certainly.
One of the consequences of my being so polite and going last is I get cut off.
Wait, we will be discussing it again.
Like to at least finish my sentence. My bottom line was simply that I'm not going to vote for anything that further jeopardizes elective choice in junior high schools. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. So are you saying you are prepared to vote now?
I'm prepared to vote against anything.
It looks like we would have a tied vote, so we probably should just bring it back. When we have our full, when we have our full board.
And given, given that, yeah, the two of us have a lot of problems with this, at least two of us, that maybe we can think, rethink this and if there isn't some way to keep that wheel the way it is. That would be a good idea.
Okay.
I'll be glad to bring the framework to you also.
Okay, so please direct any additional concerns or, or questions to Mr. Zettel before our next meeting. That takes us then to item, we have pulled item F1, we've pulled item F2. It takes us down to item F3, discussion of possible student study of elementary district fiscal solvency. And were there members of the public who were here to speak to this one? No. Okay, then we can pull that item. Okay, item F5, we need to discuss because this is time-sensitive. Mr. Gonzalez will bring this forward to us and I have to just backtrack a little bit. I forgot to just announce that we were taking items, agenda items after 10:30, which is obvious at this point, but we're sup, we're supposed to stipulate that we're doing it.
Thank you very much. I'll make this very quick. The Williams Settlement and its codified language in the Education Code requires that annually we determine that there is or is not sufficiency of materials in the core areas, which includes, core instructional areas, which includes English Language Arts, Mathematics, History and Social Science, and Science. It also requires that we establish that there is efficiency of instructional materials in health and foreign languages as well as laboratory sciences. If we could put that overhead, our review of the data, if you'll, a review of the data indicates that the following schools in the following subjects and the following grade levels do not at the present time have the appropriate instructional materials. I remind the board that in grades K8, the Education Code requires that instructional materials that are used be not only aligned to the California standards but approved by the State Board of Education. At the high school level, the requirement is that the materials are aligned to the California standards and that the local board, you folks, have approved the adoption of those materials. Very quickly, what we found is that in grades K3 and 7-8 at the Open Alternative School in the area of science, they do not presently use materials that meet the requirements of the State Board of Education. Santa Barbara Charter, K8, in Reading Language Arts, History, Social Science, the instructional materials they're using are not State Board adopted materials. In science and mathematics, at grades 6 and 8, they are not using materials that were adopted by the State Board of Education. Santa Barbara Community Academy in the area of science, grades K2, they indicated, they reported to us that they are not using the appropriate instructional materials approved by the State Board. Santa Barbara Junior High made apparently a decision in a previous administration not to purchase State Board of Education-approved health textbooks at grade 7 and 8. Dos Publis High School is using a geometry text that is not aligned to the standards or was not approved by the board in grades 9-12. Same thing with their biology textbook. They're using a biology textbook that we found no evidence that was approved by the board. San Marcos High School, World History, they're using a World History text for English learners that is not, to our knowledge, aligned to the state standards. At Santa Barbara High, this is insufficiency materials. They do not have enough copies of their English Language Arts, French and Physics books to accommodate the present need. This study indicates, these findings indicate that at this point we must ask the board to pass two resolutions, one for the elementary district and one for the secondary district. For the elementary district, it would be a resolution of insufficiency, numbers 06/07-10. For the secondary district, it would also be a resolution of insufficiency, 06/010-11. What this would mean is that we would then direct these schools to as quickly as possible purchase the appropriate instructional materials. The rules and regulations concerning the Williams Settlement indicate that they, that the district could use any fund, any funds available for instructional materials, including categoricals, to purchase this. Since the, and our recommendation would be that we first exhaust, that we purchase these needed textbooks out of categorical funds. If it could not be found in categorical funds, we would then go to the instructional budgets, both in the elementary and secondary districts. Thank you.
Okay, because of our timeframe, I just want to, and we were, we're taking this issue because, adopting these, we're taking this item tonight because adopting these resolutions are time-sensitive. We need to.
Correct.
act on this as, as quickly as possible.
We are obligated to pass these resolutions within the eight weeks of instruction. And by passing it today, Friday would be the eighth week of instruction.
Okay. So, and the resolutions themselves basically just state factual information that we are out of, that we have these schools that do not meet the, the requirements of the Williams Settlement and identify what we plan to do about it.
Correct.
If we wanted to have further discussion about why these, why we have so many that are, seem to be out of compliance and how schools are adopting textbooks that are not, that have not been approved by the board or by the state, et cetera, can we postpone that discussion for a, for a later meeting?
Of course.
Okay. So I'm going to suggest to the board that, in deference to time, that we take that tact, adopt the resolutions, if, if we agree with the resolution, that basically just state the information and that we, we do schedule a, a future agenda item to discuss why we're, why we have this situation going on or any other items, any other aspects of this that we may want to discuss.
I don't know how we can do that, Madam President, without understanding better what money we're spending and how much.
Okay. Spending on the, on the.
In, in taking this decision, it looks like we're making a commitment to, to buy the books and we're, and that we specified the funds, but I don't see how much. And. Well, that helps.
But because of the Williams settlement, we don't have much of an option about spending those funds because we're required to.
Well, but we have an option of what funds we spend. And I read this a little differently than Mr. Gonzalez just said. It said, "They may include any funds available for textbooks or instructional materials, or both, from categorical programs." Not all categorical programs provide funds for textbooks and instructional materials, is my understanding. So, I don't know, which precise funds are you talking about and how much? I don't see a price tag on this.
You're absolutely correct.
And, you know, I would even say then, and if we've got cases where the wrong books were acquired without board authorization, quite frankly, the people who did that ought to be paying for it, rather than that coming off the backs of the rest of the district. You know, that may be site funds. So, I, you know, I'd like to understand better about the financing of this.
I would-
Keeping in mind that we will be out of complaints if we don't adopt these by Friday?
Keep in mind that, you know, I came to the last meeting and we didn't have this on the last agenda and I'm here tonight.
Okay. So, do we want to set another meeting before Friday? I mean, because we don't have that information tonight, correct?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Well, then, you know.
Well, maybe we should consider what the consequences would be of not adopting until our next meeting. The fact that we have it on the agenda tonight, the fact that we'd be bringing it back to our next meeting for adoption, even though it's past that deadline, may not be such a problem.
Okay.
You are correct, Dr. Service.
We will defer to our superintendent's suggestion and we will bring this back to our next board meeting. Okay. And again, we already have an entirely full agenda just on the basis of the items we pulled from tonight. So, heaven forbid that we actually have something new we have to discuss next week or at our next meeting. But I do want to, again, urge the board members to forward any questions or requests for additional information to Mr. Gonzalez prior to our next board meeting so that the information that we request can be available. Okay. With that, that brings us to the end of our agenda, at least such as it is. Coming events, are there any coming events we need to discuss? That's the- adjournment is the coming event we're all looking forward to. But any board comments? Future agenda items, I think we can probably find and we've just come up with a whole slew of them. So, that does bring us to adjournment. At 11:20, we are adjourned.